Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August 1st, 2012 Town Council Business Meeting. We will start, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the public which stands on our nation, on our ground, indivisible, and individing, and just for our own.
Before we start, I'd like to note that Counselor Wright and Acting Administrator/Policeman Seer are both on vacation and will not be here tonight. Excused absences. Counselor LeBranche.
Motion to seal the first non-public minutes.
Second.
This evening.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, Ellen, could you call the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Did you want to be called on?
Are we doing this first?
Yeah. Yes, we are moving things. Just so everyone is aware who's following at home or counselors on your agenda, we're going to move the Linked Together presentation up first so that they have the opportunity prior to the public sessions to present to us. There's a few other agenda changes, but we'll wait until after this presentation.
Hi, my name is Julia Paul. We would like to thank you for taking the time to hear our concern. When we go to the Pocket Park each week, we are finding that people are using the park with their dogs and not picking up after their dogs. Next is Mia Smith. It has really become a big problem because we need to pick after the people's dogs before we can open up our lemonade stand and start our work. Next is Avery Richardson.
When we go there each Wednesday, we are going there to plant new flowers, water the garden, deadhead the plants, and pull out the weeds, as well as hold our lemonade stand to make more money for the park. Next is Cory Richardson.
We are really working hard in the Pocket Park. It tires us out. Next is Katie Morgan.
We would like to ask you if you would allow us to place a dispenser like this one in the Pocket Park and assign such as this one. These were not part of the original plans that we presented in 2006.
Next is Jenna Titus.
We talked with Rick and he said that it could go on the red fire pole so that it would be right at the entrance of the park for people to see. Rick said that his men will put the dispenser up for us if you approve it. Next is Mia Smith.
We will pay for the dispenser with the money that we made holding our soup in the jar fundraiser. We hope that you will support our plan. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
Yes, when are you going to do this?
Will dogs still be allowed in the park?
Will dogs still be allowed in the park?
Yeah.
Yes.
They just have to clean up after themselves, right? The dogs. Wouldn't it be great if a dog could clean up after themselves? Counselor LeBranche.
I would like to make a motion to allow Linked Together to have a bag dispenser placed at the Pocket Park.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Friendly amendment and a sign.
And a sign. And a sign.
Still a second. Still a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ellen, could you please call the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Congratulations. Thank you very much. I have a few housekeeping things and change the agenda to make, but one announcement I wanted to make that Ree may actually want to hear and the kids may actually want to hear. You may want to wait just one second for this announcement. I am absolutely ecstatic to announce that the Town of Newmarket is entering into agreement with a new town administrator. We are actually going to have a town administrator. The dates have not been set quite yet. His name is Steve Fornier. He is currently the town administrator of Hampton. He's been town administrator of several other towns. I'm sorry, of Northampton. That's right. They've separated way back when. Town of Northampton, he's had several other administrator positions, and we are privileged to have him coming to this town, and we are very excited that he should be starting hopefully sometime around the beginning of September. So.
Thank you.
Couple other housekeeping items.
Guys, get super.
We'll let them depart. There are individuals here to speak about both auto gas and the insurance conversation that we started a few weeks ago. We will allow them to speak during the Efficiency Committee because they did come up initially during the Efficiency Committee recommendations, although the Chair of the Efficiency Committee has been told since there were no pre-reads, we're not going to be able to make any sort of decisions right now because we need to go through all the documentation prior to decision-making. Matt Angel is going to come up before we get into the council objectives in order to talk about some CIP money. There's been some talk around town. It started, there was a conversation during a CIP committee about it. I just want to make sure that everyone's clear as to what the status is with that CIP money. Individuals that are here to talk about Church Street, and I bet there's more than a couple here to talk about Church Street. I know you're going to come up and talk during the non-agenda items because it is currently a non-agenda item. I want to make everyone aware that we will be, because legally the way it works, we have to have a resolution in order to change the direction. So there has to be two readings of that, which also includes a public comment. So you're obviously more than welcome to make your comments now, but there will also be another time where it's specifically designed for public comment around that. I also would like it noted that there was on 4/1/22 public comment around that, and nobody showed up. So I'm glad that there's people to show up and have a conversation now. And one last housekeeping item for the members of the council. We're going to try to make this a little more structured. When individuals are presenting, we will ask questions of them. As always, it starts with three questions as opposed to getting into a discussion with the presenters. We will have a discussion post the question and answer, but when there's individuals presenting to us, we are allowed to ask them questions to get more information or clarification, but we are not to get into debates or deliberations with them. The debates and deliberations occur up here, not between whoever's standing there. Any questions?
Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah. It's, so I've taken the time to watch more than a few meetings at this point, and we get bogged down in back and forths between, and this is not one, this is all of us. We all at one time or another have gotten bogged down going back and forth with individuals that are presenting to us, and that is not the role of the individuals presenting us information. We are the decision-making body. They're there to give us information. We should be asking information of them, but we should not be getting into debates with individuals that have come before the council to present us with information. I think we need to have robust debates up here. We need to have conversations. If during it we need more information, the individual certainly should be asked to come back up and provide that information, but if we are going back and forth with individuals there, it becomes counterproductive. And honestly, sometimes I've watched a few where I've seen it be somewhat rude back and forth on both sides, and we just don't need that. We're a professional body, and we just can't be getting into that. We represent the town. We should represent it well. Counselor Bentley, and then Counselor Levy.
I would hope that would be for town employees also to come before us.
Absolutely. Definitely.
So just so I'm clear. To clarify. So I'm clear. So if someone's presenting something for the town to purchase or something of that nature, and we ask them a question about how a number was arrived at or whatever.
That's allowed.
So what are you saying?
What I'm trying to prevent is, and I'll put a stop to it, too. I have a role to play in this as the Chair. When it starts going back and forth between arguing over who knows what, but what it needs to be is a presentation of information. What you just stated right there is asking for clarification on numbers. Here's the number. How did you arrive at the number? That's just asking for information. That's totally within, not only our realm, I think it's our duty to ask those questions. So what I don't want to see it degrade into is back and forth opinions that have sometimes come up that I think actually derail the conversation away from what the agenda item is supposed to be. That being said, we will now have a public hearing on Ordinance 2012-2013-01, which is the closure of the Black Bear Tiff. And let me pull this up. Second reading of public hearing. Town of Newmarket, New Hampshire, by the Newmarket Town Council, Ordinance 2012-2013-01, amend and close out the Black Bear Tiff. Whereas the Newmarket Town Council adopted Ordinance 98-04 relating to the establishment of the Black Bear Business Park Tax Increment Finance District, Black Bear Tiff pursuant to RSA 162K, whereas the wishes to discontinue collection of tax increments under RSA 162K for the Black Bear Tiff so that any future public facilities for the Black Bear Tiff will be constructed and financed as provided by the general laws of the state of New Hampshire. Whereas the Newmarket Town Council wishes to amend the development program and tax increment financing plan to discontinue the Black Bear Tiff and return tax increments collected to the town's general fund. Now therefore be it resolved that the development program and tax increment financing plan for the Black Bear Tiff are hereby amended to provide as follows. Development program and financing plan for the Newmarket Black Bear Tiff. All future public facilities for the Black Bear Tiff shall be constructed using funds raised in issuance with general laws of the state of New Hampshire without the use of tax increments under RSA 162K. As no bonds, notes, or other obligations related to the Black Bear Tiff are outstanding, the Black Bear Tiff shall be discontinued, and the funds contained within the Black Bear Tiff Fund Eight in the amounts of $489,104.57 shall be transferred to the general fund. Newmarket Ordinance 98-04 relating to the establishment of the Black Bear Business District Tax Increment Financing District shall be repealed. All property in the Black Bear Tiff shall be assessed for ad valorem property taxation as provided by the general laws of the state of New Hampshire without the use of tax increments under RSA 162K. Two, the Town Council directs the town administrator to close the Black Bear Tiff Fund Eight and transfer $489,104.57 in said fund to the town's general fund. Three, the Newmarket Ordinance 98-04 relating to the establishment of the Black Bear Business Park Tax Increment Finance District is hereby repealed. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage. Introduction date, July 11, 2012. Public hearing, August 1, 2012. Hopefully final action by the council, August 1, 2012. Public hearing on the closure of the Black Bear Tiff. Public hearing, comment opened at 7:13.
Hi, Amy Thompson Langslane. I just had a quick question, I suppose, date-wise on this one. This is the second reading. From this point, once assuming this resolution passes, will you vote on it tonight?
That...
Is this the second reading? And then at what date? Is there a date that this will actually happen and the funds be transferred and the tiff closed, I guess?
So it is my desire to see it voted on tonight. I believe Max, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong. But the funds obviously will take, could be transferred as soon as tomorrow, and the tiff will be closed as soon as we take this action.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:15. I'll entertain a motion now, or you can do it during New Business. Counselor LeBranche.
Motion to adopt Ordinance 2012-2013-01, amend and close out of Black Bear Tiff.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none? Ellen, could you please call the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Next is a public hearing on Resolution 2012-2013-03 relating to the withdrawal of $141,126.64 from the Water Capital Reserve Fund and $5,773.36 from the water impact fees for the engineering and pilot study for the McIntosh Well. Whereas the Town Council needs to undertake a pilot test of the McIntosh Well to determine the quality of the water and the level of treatment that may be necessary when connected to the system, and whereas to determine the treatment process, it requires operating the well in the manner it will be pumped when brought online, and whereas the Department of Environmental Services has undertaken a sanitary survey of the system and determined that the system has two major deficiencies, namely, it does not have enough water supply and/or storage capacity, and that DES may impose a moratorium on new construction until the town either increases supply or storage capacity, and whereas engineering the pilot test costs total $146,900 to be funded with $141,126.64 from the Water Capital Reserve Fund and $5,773.36 from the water impact fees, and whereas the Water Capital Reserve has a current balance of $162,849. Now therefore be it resolved, the Newmarket Town Council does hereby approve the withdrawal of $141,126.26 from the Water Capital Reserve Fund and utilize $5,773.36 from the water impact fees to fund the necessary engineering and pilot testing of the McIntosh Well. Given at the Town Council chambers in Newmarket, New Hampshire, this first day of August in the year of our Lord 2012. Public comment will open up at 7:17. McIntosh Well. There's no public comment? Yep, there we go.
Just my two cents. I think that this is important to do, to try to ensure Newmarket's future as far as the water supply goes and to get this done. So I would push all the counselors to vote to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Any other comment? Seeing none, the public comment closes at 7:18. This is the second reading on this, so I would entertain a motion. Counselor LeBranche.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2012-2013-03 as read.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion? Ellen, please call the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes six to zero.
Just one signature.
Yeah, it's, this is an ordinance versus a resolution. Kind of threw me off when I looked at it. We will now have public hearing on non-agenda items. So, anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is non-agenda. The public hearing will open at 7:19. Thanks, Gary.
Hi, I'm Sarah Lowe. I live at 3 Church Street, and I guess the first thing I heard about this was in the Exeter Newsletter article about three weeks ago that indicated that the council had decided to change the direction of Church Street to up the hill, and presently it comes down the hill. And my feeling on it is that Church Street is a dangerous street in either direction, but as a person who lives there, I don't see that I would be able to get in and out of my driveway and up the hill, turn up the hill on a snow-covered road and be able to get out. And I'm not sure I could get back into my driveway coming up the hill. I can barely do it coming down, and sometimes I can't. Can't get in even then. I understand that the plow, the people who do the plowing, had suggested that it might be difficult or impossible to plow in the uphill direction. I certainly think that two-wheel-drive vehicles would have a difficult time in bad weather. One of my biggest concerns is that it's really a walking path for the Stone Church in that all day and night, people are walking up the middle of the street because the sidewalk is narrow and there's a rickety set of stairs at the top, and it's not maintained in the wintertime because of the grade. So people have a tendency to walk right in the middle of the street. If people were trying to drive up the hill and yielding to pedestrians, I could see a lot of vehicles having to back back down the hill or slip back down the hill. And I've seen people in the wintertime not even be able to get into Rock Street or into the Ledges parking lot when there's snow on the ground. And I wonder if the fire and rescue trucks would be able to get up that grade if they needed to. And I asked the man on the recycling truck. They said they didn't think that they could pick up trash in that direction because of the grade. I'm sure that, you know, that was just his opinion, but at the top, I understand it's to make access to the Stone Church easier by putting a sign at the bottom of the hill. Chapel Street is already two-way. Granite Street comes right off Chapel. It seems like it'd be an easy set of directions with GPS, MapQuest, and Stone Church advertising. I don't see how it can be that hard to find. So in light of all of that, I feel like a street that has very low travel now with local traffic, because most people just don't go that way. It's pretty dangerous coming around that corner and coming down. You really, there is a moment when you turn the corner heading down where you really can't see, there could be a dog or a child right below your car as you turn down. So I think the fact that it's just local people coming through and postal trucks who are very cautious when they go by, I just don't think it should become a private driveway for a business. Thank you.
Bert Allen, 56th Garrison Road. I haven't talked once on this particular issue because I didn't want to bring up old ghosts. Probably the only person who would know this name, when I bring the name White up, would be probably John over there. In our first-grade class, which was here, the white boy died on that sidewalk when we had traffic going that way, and his body fluids went all the way down to the church. That was the last time that road was that direction. I haven't said anything because I didn't want to drum up any past ghosts or what have you, as they say, but that was in both John's and my class from this particular room here that was our first-grade class. Okay, so you're kind of right, it is dangerous. If you look at the curb, you'd have to do a curb cut right where that sidewalk is where it slopes this way. When it gets ice-covered, it slides out into the road. So if you're going that way, you automatically would slide underneath the tires of a dual-wheel vehicle if you're heading up the hill. So if you're going to invest in cutting the sidewalk out, okay, change the traffic, but it's just, that's right in front of where my grandmother was behind, where the Ramses was, the Shanda place right there that, from about that corner down about 26 feet, has to be re-sloped. They've never changed it because it's a sheer piece of granite there. So to that, little problems corrected, you just can't go up there safely. If there's any slipiness or any water, you slide underneath wheels of vehicles. Okay, that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Sarah. Other comment?
Hi, I'm Jenna Gon, 5 Church Street. I don't think I would have moved into the apartment that I live in if the road was going up the hill. It's a really dangerous road already. I had my reservations moving there to begin with, but I will probably, if the road does change, have to move after my lease is up. So I just wanted you to reconsider that. Thanks.
Any other comment? But like I said before about all the comments on Church Street, there'll be another opportunity since we have to pass this as the form, or vote on this in the form of resolution. There'll have to be two readings of the resolution, like we just had in those other ones, which would include a public comment. So seeing, oh, one more.
Could I just ask a quick question? What was the reasoning for...
Yeah, you got to come up to it because no one at home can hear you.
All right. I can't do podiums, so I'll find out. Thank you.
All right. Well, if you want to talk to one of us offline, that's to ask a question.
Yeah, I will just ask that lady's question.
Name and address.
This is Anshul. I live in 5 Church Street. I would just ask the question again, that what was the reason that you have decided to actually change the direction of that street?
I can say that a resident requested, came before the Highway Safety Committee requesting it, and then the Highway Safety Committee offered it up to the Town Council. Town Council had deliberations with both the head of Public Works and the police chief, and in that timeframe, there was really, well, enough people on the council saw it fit that there was no reason not to change the direction at that point, so there was a vote in favor of that. Now realizing we have to have a resolution in order to do that, the deliberations are opened up again. So, just like any resident can come and petition in front, any resident who has something that they want to see happen is more than welcome to work through the channels to come and have a conversation with the council or with any of the bodies in town.
Well, like my apartment is at the top of the hill, so I have to just add, the lady who first spoke, she said that she's not able to move out of the driveway. We have like four cars inside our driveway at 5 Church Street. So we are at the top of the hill. There is no chance that even if in the snow or even now also, we can like move, drive out of our driveway and like go up the hill. And it is always too dangerous that, we know that, when we have to turn right and go down the hill, we cannot see who is coming from that direction. But if cars are going up the hill, then they will definitely be speeding up so that they can move up the hill in a steady like pace. So there is always, that is a bigger risk of actually some resident who is just walking on the street and the car who is moving up the hill doesn't see that person, so it might be a chance that he or she might be hit. And always there are concerns with the, like, the trash, the fire rescue, the post office, the post vehicle. So I really would like to actually just raise all of these points to you, to the panel so that this can be reconsidered again.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Vice Chair Bentley, do you have something?
Hi again. When would the resolution be read twice?
So the first reading would probably be next meeting, the workshop, which is the 15th of August, and then the first Wednesday in August, September 5th, will be the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll go. Any other public comment? Vice Chair Bentley.
Just to be clear, I'm glad the Chair brought it up. There was some confusion in some of the letters we got today that it, there was, you know, it was posted to speak about this before on the agenda before, in whatever date you brought along.
January 4th.
And people came, and we just mentioned the Stone Church, but there was also people from Historical Society who asked for, and ex-counsel Bergeron, when he was on the Road Commission, said that some of the people in the same building you folks are in said they would rather have it up because they don't like going down because of the snow and ice. So it's kind of, we have listened, someone, you know, two of you just asked, what was the basis of decision? I think we listened to everybody. We listened to, some folks said they hate going down in the ice and they slide. We also listened, some people said they hate taking a left turn across 108. So you come to the bottom of the hill by the bank facing the community church, and to cross that road, they thought, they'd much rather go up and go down by Jerry Abbott, come out that way. So it wasn't just, oh, someone wanted it. We did, just so everyone knows the history, because some of you are getting, you know, involved now, but the history of it, we listened to some other residents from that area, some other businesses in that area, and the decision was based on a lot of things, not just one person or one situation. So as we'll continue to do with the next hearing, you know, we'll listen to everybody then. So I'd encourage everyone to come out and speak. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment at 7:29. Next item is the Town Council to consider acceptance of minutes of the 18-July workshop. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for July 18, 2012. Excuse me.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Ellen, call the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes six to zero. We'll talk about this under Old New Business, but just so the counselors are aware, we have non-public minutes from the Town Council search process that we're going to, that we are going to consider for releasing so that people can see the deliberations as long as there is no sensitive information in it. But the minutes we were given, one of the couns... But the minutes we were given, one of the councilors brought it to my attention and confirmed that they were draft minutes, not the approved minutes. There were changes that were made to the minutes. So the original minutes that we approved last week for the July 9th meeting, I think it was, are correct, not the ones that are inside of your packet. Next item that we added is Matt Angel to talk about the CIP issue.
Good evening, Chair and Town Councilors. During the last CIP meeting, I raised an issue where I closed a couple of funds, and these funds have been sitting on the general ledger since 2006 without any activity. There is one fund that had a transaction that occurred at the beginning of 2007, but it's just funds that were never used. The source of the funds, it took us three days to go and find the source of the funds. Unfortunately, the transactions in the general ledger didn't easily lead us to the conclusion, plus the actual paper documents weren't really there. So, and we verified with the trustee of trust funds that the source of funds were from water and sewer capital reserve funds. So as a result, we returned back to the trustee of trust funds, $452,913.66 to the water capital reserve fund. We transferred $177,960.47 to the sewer capital reserve fund. Now, both of these are held by the trustees of trust funds, and they're going to be available for water and sewer projects through the normal withdrawal process, which is going to be a public hearing and a resolution by the Town Council. Okay?
Questions?
So I just want to be clear, there is now going to be added to the water, is it the water CIP?
Yes.
It's 452?
Yes.
And 177 to the sewer CIP, correct?
Yes.
So since April, we had been debating that 682,000 to close the downtown TIF, all, you know, that we've been talking about for the last several months. That money theoretically would have been available to use?
It would be double dipped if you tried to do that. Basically, you'd be drawing off of the same source of funds for the same purpose. Okay? Because the, it was based upon a 2004 Town Council resolution that was to withdraw funds for the Phase 2 project, which is the Main Street reconstruction. Okay? At the time, we were having the discussions about closing the downtown TIF and the Main Street project. We had not located the source of that funds. So I couldn't, I couldn't come before the Town Council and say it came from capital reserve funds, because the general ledger transactions actually led me down another road. Originally, I thought they came from the general fund.
Okay. So just, can I clarify? So just to clarify, we ultimately voted, and I don't have, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think we took 198 and 482 out of the downtown TIF.
Yes.
And that closed that downtown TIF. Some of this 452, in theory, well, this 452 is now part of the water CIP, correct?
Yes.
So where I'm going is, we've already voted on the closure of the downtown TIF. And we used primarily, or the largest amount of money came from the downtown TIF.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And a lot of that was because of the concern about, you know, the money that was going to be left in the water fund if we had taken, you know, I don't want to rehash that whole thing, but there was a lot of concern about where the money was going to come from and how much money was going to be left in the water. Is there any opportunity now, because basically we're at zero after the money that we expended tonight, we pretty much have nothing in the water CIP. There's like 20,000 or so, give or take, without this money?
I, you know, I don't have the exact numbers, but your logic seems correct.
I'm in the ballpark. So let's just say there's zero to make it easy. So there's 452, which is a good number, I guess. I guess that's an appropriate number to have in the water CIP. If we wanted to use some of the money that we've already taken out of the downtown TIF, because if this had been available, I would-
Get to the question.
Well, the question, the question is, we used primarily downtown TIF money. And that was based on the fact that we didn't have, you know, much money in the water CIP and the water fund. We didn't want to plead it. Now we've got almost, you know, 450,000 odd-
Your question is, correct me if I'm wrong, your question is, can we now remove money from what we used to close out the downtown TIF that was from the downtown TIF back into the general fund and then use some of this water money?
Not all of it.
Some, but to close this out.
I think there's some legal implications.
Yeah, that's what I would think, too.
But, but you may be able to?
Okay.
I don't see any accounting reason why you can't.
The only reason I'll leave-
Well, let's wait with questions, then we'll have a conversation.
Sure.
Does, does the, does your report tonight have any impact on the finances of the town?
No, it doesn't change the general fund. It doesn't, doesn't increase or decrease the tax rate. It's just returning unspent funds back to the proper custodian, which is the trustee of trust funds.
So this is not a benefit? This is not a-
Detriment.
This is simply, my question is, is this simply just-
Bookkeeping.
Bookkeeping?
It's bookkeeping. But if you want to put a better, a detriment or betterment to somebody, the water and sewer ratepayers are going to benefit from this, because it was funds raised by water and sewer that can be used for water and sewer projects. And, you know, whether it impacts the rates or not, I can't really say, but I think Sean could say better on that.
Before, Sean, could you, do you have the ability to speak to that at this point, or do you not have that information?
The big thing on the water side is, is it makes the cap, puts money in capital improvement that gives us the ability to move forward on the projects that we need to do. Looking at the finances for the water department, they're in very good shape. It looks like we have enough money, as I presented to the CIP committee, to do the things we need to do this year without raising rates again next year. The sewer side, it helps out the CIP, but, you know, with the things that are looming over the sewer department, it's not going to fill that hole.
Counselor Levy.
Yeah, I mean, the only reason I bring it up is because some of, you know, we could have probably paid off, the point is, we could have paid off the downtown TIF in a different blend of money, which would have allowed us to have a little bit more money to give some tax relief. And that's why I'm bringing it up. And it, I don't know that it's just an accounting issue. I think it's, it would have been nice to know that we had the 450,000, you know, in the water CIP when we were making that decision. So, you know, now we find out after, you know, a few weeks after the vote, so that's why I brought it up.
Can, any other questions for Matt? I have a question. The amount of time you spent with the downtown TIF, had you not been spending those hours seeking out all that information about the background of the downtown TIF, would you have spent more time to figure out what's in the other funds and probably come up with this number?
Yes. Yeah. And just to warn you, there's one more fund that I'm trying to kill, and this one goes back to 2005. Unfortunately, the general ledger has not given me enough detail to really sink my teeth into it, but my general impression is it relates to the sewer line that goes to the Wadley Falls Retirement Center. And right now, the deficit on the books is about $38,000. And that's what I'm researching at this moment.
Counselor Carmichael.
We're going back to 204, 205.
Yeah.
Have we had that bad management in the finance department in all these years that nobody's caught any of this?
Well, I can't speak to whether it's good or bad management, but I can say that these balances have been on the books for these many years.
Can't believe it.
I'm with you, Counselor Carmichael. Any other questions for Matt? Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Town Council Goals and Objectives for Fiscal Year 2013. I wanted this put on the agenda because as Counselor Zink brought up last, last meeting, we've, much like last year, we had a bunch of objectives and have allowed ourselves to become, in many cases rightfully so, wrapped up in other information and other items. And I think that honestly, this year, they've come to some solid fruition. Last year, we ended up collaborating and getting deliberative session, pushed together and some charter changes, so it's solid. But we got together about three months ago, about a quarter ago, to determine these, more than that now, almost six months ago at this point, to determine what we wanted our goals to be as a council. And we really haven't done a lot to move forward on many of these. We started going down the path of coming up with concrete actions we wanted to see the administrator move forward on, to, or to drive forward in order to achieve these. And really, we sort of, because of other items that came up, stopped on that. So I wanted to make sure, two things. One, that as far as getting the basics right, we decide what we want the administrator to report to us on when we get the new administrator in, which is going to be very shortly. And two, that we actually have concrete actions, we're directing the individuals, the town to engage in, that will actually allow us to achieve these three goals. I'll leave it at that, right, for my point right now, other than saying, does anyone have input to where we want to drive the administrator when he comes aboard to engage in helping us achieve these goals? Vice Chair Bentley.
I think we've spoken about a couple of, was having these goals addressed each, you know, maybe not each meeting, but every couple of meetings go over where we are on them. We also talked about as far as finances, you know, which was a lot of people's number one thing, getting more formalized reports more often, having all the reports the same. A lot of the departments are doing reports, but they weren't in the same format. It doesn't, it's not a matter if they're good or bad, they were just different. The rec department might have a different format than the police department might have a different than Public Works. So I think, you know, make, make Steve aware of these goals right off, and, you know, we drive that bus and say what, you know, how are we going to communicate better with the community, you know, and B, this is what we want to do. Finances is what we want. We want to report every month. We want every quarter them to come and address the council. We want, you know, those, those things. I think we're the ones that have to direct that.
Oh, Counselor Zink, Counselor Zink. No? I think Vice Chair Bentley brings up a good thing with finances. We talk about wanting to have tighter financial controls as a, or as a council, or at least visibility over finances, yet we do not up to this point have a standard set of, like a standard brief we're getting monthly, like any board of directors would, on what the financial stability and, and health of the town is. An absence of an administrator, I think as a body, we could request of the town's finance director to put together something that would provide us with that level of information. Obviously, none of us individually can, but as a body. Counselor Zink.
Yeah, I, actually, I had a discussion with Matt about that today, trying to, I was trying to get my head around what a good report would be, and I don't think there's an easy answer to it. So my suggestion is to let Steve and Matt put together what they think to be the financial, the key financial items that should be presented to the, to the board periodically. I don't know whether that's monthly or whatever it is. I know in my business, I look at balance sheet, I look at my P and L, and I look at my development costs. Those are the three things I look at every morning, but I don't know how those translate into municipalities. But I, I, my sense, the first, on, on the first objective of finances is to, to ask Matt and Steve to present to us what do they consider to be the information that we should have.
Does consensus of the council to direct them to do that? Anyone have an issue with that? Matt, could you do something like, would you need more than two weeks to get that accomplished?
Actually, at the next Town Council meeting, I'd like to talk about the fiscal health of the town, and I can probably go through what some of the key elements are of fiscal management for a town. So from there, we can, I can do it at the next meeting.
Okay. But what I think we also want is something that we can get on a routine basis, that rather than just a stack of every, all the dollars and cents that's been spent, that actually provides us more, like, not just information, but intelligence.
Yeah.
Processed information that allows us to make decisions.
One of the things I'm hoping that the Town Council will consider is that I'm in the process of revamping the chart of accounts, which is going to give more detailed information, and, and that's going to change how the finance office is going to report to this board and to other commissions and departments.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Zink.
And I don't know what, what your process is, but if we, if you think it's appropriate, I think we ought to go through these items and talk about what the next action item ought to be. For example, communication with the, with the community, I think one of the things that we found tonight on this whole up-down-street issue is that the communication came through, yes, Exeter Newsletter. I know we had our meetings and so forth, but I know in the discussions we had with the various town administrative candidates, they all presented to us some pretty outstanding-looking community communications. And I think, I don't, I don't know where it comes on the, on the council's list of priorities, but that seems to be one that, that I hear from constituents that they want. They want some kind of, something they can pick up in their hands and say this, that's what's happening. So that's my suggestion on the communication with the community is to make that a priority for Steve to look at.
Any other comments on communication? I would concur that we need to have, we, I don't think we're doing, we're still not doing a good job of communication. We really haven't changed anything. I think there's information getting out there, and people using like the XR newsletter and whatnot and Facebook to get information out, but I think we, we need probably a more streamlined way. And I would agree that I think we should direct Steve to, or request of Steve to put together some sort of newsletter that allows information to get out. And I know Counselor Wright brought a great example of Durham, he has a good one, there's multiple ones out there. Counselor Levy.
Just out of curiosity, would, did any of those folks who spoke tonight, did they get a letter from the town talking about the change of the drive, the road? Is it, was there any formal letter sent out?
No, I don't think so, because we have to have the resolution and everything like that.
Okay. So there was no butter letter sent by the town? Just out of curiosity?
I, you know, but before we had the last public hearing, I wasn't chair then. Do you know if anything was sent out to the butters?
No, it was just a public hearing that was posted in the newsletter.
Okay, it's a good point, though, Counselor.
Thank you.
Trying not to go, this is not like the back and forth of the public right now. No, it's, I'm not trying to stymie the public allowing to talk, but that we had the room for public comment at the beginning.
Also, that was the public comment, huh?
During the beginning was the public comment timeframe.
I had information I needed to give to you, I didn't know what-
Reference to?
Who you was asked to need to give. $350,000 available to us. I needed to just pass it out to the councilors? I didn't know what was supposed to be-
So Mr. Allen, if you're going to be here for the whole meeting, I will gladly stand by and collect the information for you and put it on an agenda to have a conversation at another meeting about?
Don't need to have a conversation, you can read.
Okay, well-
I just need to pass it to you.
All right, if you put it up here, I'll make sure that every single counselor gets it. How's that sound? There you go.
Thank you.
Thanks. So outside of the newsletter, is there anything else that we think that we could do to help increase communication with the community? And, and I stand by that we shouldn't be trying to like tell them what to think, but we should just put, be putting raw facts out there and let people make their own decisions out of that. Any way we could leverage Channel 13 better? I know Ed just asked, asked the administrator, should we get back to that when Steve gets back here? Counselor Branch.
When you said to utilize Channel 13, I'm sure we can, we can utilize it better, but currently, we have Channel 13 that, you know, does replays of our meetings, does have the signboards that go across saying what's, what's coming up, what's, what's happening in the community. You know, we also have access on computers for people that do have them to go and watch any meeting that they want any time of the day. So, you know, I'm not sure if, if those are the routes that we want to take. I mean, I don't, I can't come up with a different way of doing this, short of having a town crier, but, you know.
We've got plenty of them.
[laughing]
But, you know, I, I think, you know, we've been suggested newsletters, stuff like that, you know, maybe that's something we can look into, but to me, the way that the information does get out to the public right now is far better than it was 10 years ago. You know, before we had Channel 13, before we had the other stuff. And not everybody's able to access Channel 13 because you do have to be a Comcast customer. But, you know, it's, it's got to be something different than that. If the people aren't getting the information, we've got to come up with it with an innovative way to do it. And I don't have the answer, you know, I wish I did.
Well, maybe the newsletter and like an e-newsletter is the, is the solution. Counselor Bentley.
We did bring it up, we spoke about it, and a couple of the other ideas were, you know, using the digital board more, which I think we've done better this year than over the past. We talked about maybe leaving things at the library, the library gets a lot of use, maybe you could have a little pamphlet to leave there. We talked about, again, partnering with the school, and when we're going to get things out, maybe you send something home with the kids, and the school could do the same with us, send it out to us to get it home. So we have touched some of these ideas, and you know what, the public's watching now, why don't contact us and tell us another, another venue to get it to you. Some of the ones that are watching it, that can watch it on, you know, computer or TV, but, you know, I think we've thrown them out and we just haven't, I don't think we've ever done anything with the library. I don't think we've done anything with the school to see if we could pass out things before, you know, before voting or any, any big things that need to go out. I think those venues are there and we ought to look into them.
I would, I would be cautious passing things out before voting. I think systematic handing out of information is different than.
I mean, just about, about not, about how to vote on them, and just, hey, there's vote, you know, there's, the polls are open, or don't forget this, or the Secretary of State just sent us all something about the new, new rules in law, you know, maybe there's another venue to get it out there, so people aren't shocked, well, I didn't see it there, you know, I'm just throwing it out.
Counselor Zink.
What I'm, what I'm hearing from folks is, is that, that obviously we're very involved in everything that's going on, too involved maybe. And we watch things on TV and, because it's of interest to us, but a lot of people don't. And again, I think, I think if the citizens decided they want to spend three or four or five thousand dollars to publish a monthly newsletter or something, I think we should, we should give them the opportunity to give us that feedback. Because it's going to be a budget issue, and it's going to be that kind of expense, I would think. So I, if people think it's important, I think they ought to let us know.
Right. Counselor Levy.
I think we could probably just do some press releases with Foster's and Exeter Newsletter, and maybe annotate on that the, the focus of the agendas each week, you know, that we're going to have a meeting, and I think we could probably get that in the paper without costing us anything. This is a thought.
Good. Let's move, let's move on, just to keep this moving to water. I think we actually have made steps forward with water thus far, based on the vote we just, we just made there. Is there anything else we think we should be doing to help advance the, the current water shortage situation, or we think we've sort of shot all the bullets that we have right now? Vice Chair Bentley.
Again, I think, I think Sean did a great job last year, and I thought, informing the town about the, the need for the line from the towers down to the wash station. I think we all need to partner up with them and do it again. You know, nothing's going to change, we still don't have sufficient water to fight a fire downtown, that's from our insurer that told us that. Less than 50% of what we need down there, and that's everyone's issue, whether you're a renter or homeowner, live downtown or not. And I think we need to come up with a way to get that message out, because 311 people voted straight no's last year because a couple of people came up to the podium and said to, and that in effect meant they wanted higher taxes, you know, so there's, you know, as good of a job I think we did explaining that, we need to all help somehow do it better so people understand the implications and ramifications of, you know, it's not going to affect this group. Some people still, after it was very well explained, voted no even if they weren't water users and they weren't going to be touched at all. And I've had people tell me that, well, I didn't know that, I didn't understand that. So we got to, I mean, the issue's not going to go away, we need to talk about it again this year. We still need the water line, we still need some, you know, the electrical work up on the, on the tower, and I don't know what the answer is, but we need to, to help educate as much as we can.
Counselor Zink.
I know that Counselor Wright is not here tonight, but I know he's taken a special interest in this, and has gone back into the AECOM reports and so forth. So maybe he can, he's, he's an engineer by trade, he knows his stuff, and maybe we can, in a very subtle way, have him help lead us through, through the discussion. But I agree, I think that we've made some good steps. I'm always concerned that all the work we've done in the past gets lost. Dan's done a great job going back and re categor, you know, revisiting all of that. So maybe we can lean on Dan a bit to keep us informed.
I think, any, any other comments? I think, one, I think it's great that Counselor Wright's taken that initiative, and two, I think the next, really the next step with, with water is the warrant article, correct? Is that, so perhaps we need to start getting ahead of the communications battle by having the conversation, ensuring everyone understands that there is a potential moratorium on building, that just because we passed this resolution today is not stopping the potential resolution if we, the potential moratorium on building in this town if we don't continue to drive forward to deal with the fact that our town does not have enough water. So maybe these are not entirely mutually exclusive, but there's some overlap between the two. Is there anything we should be doing to drive that home right now? Ensure, continuing to get the message out about the fact that we have. Counselor Branch.
Well, I, as far as the McIntosh well's concerned, I think that the, the major reason we lost that was because people thought or assumed that we were going to spend the top dollar, you know, you know. We had planned on a dollar figure that included total treatment and everything, and we hadn't even done the pump test to find out what type of treatment we really needed. So we were just trying to pass a warrant so we could get the bonding right for X dollars, not really knowing that we were going to spend that much. And I think that's where we need to be better and let the people understand that, you know, if we don't need this motor, we're not going to buy this motor. That's what we've got to, got to educate them on, you know, also to the extent that it doesn't affect the tax rate. You know, those are two critical things, and the sooner we start doing that, and the sooner, you know, obviously when we, when we start doing the pump test, we'll have a better idea where we're at, and you know, we can let people then tell us what we need to do. But we, we did a bad job of letting people know that we weren't necessarily going to spend the full vote.
I think, I think it's also important, I don't know if everyone, I'm sure everyone got the thing from LGC this week that had like all the bills of concern for municipalities, and I'm not sure how many people went through them, but one of them actually stated, as I read it, and I need to check with Becky, that we are now allowed to put the potential tax impact on warrant articles. So as opposed to before, when you're not allowed to put, you know, when people are voting on a warrant article and they don't see what the impact is on their tax rate, we are now going to be allowed to put what the estimated impact is on the tax rate, which I think is going to facilitate in that. Counselor Zink.
In keeping with what Counselor Branch was just saying, I wondered, did we, did we make a mistake by bundling that warrant article together? In other words, if we had just taken a piece of it and said, let's do the investigation of the well without, I can't, what was, I can't remember what the number was, it was, the warrant article was?
Three million.
Three million. And I wonder if that kind of set people back on their heels where if we had said, we want to spend $720,000 on these phases, whether that would have been better presented to the community? I don't know.
But he had to go three for the bonding though, right?
Counselor Branch.
That was discussed, but it was a situation where, as a council at that time, we didn't feel like we wanted to come back every year asking for a million-dollar bonding authority, you know, a million-two bonding authority. We didn't want to come back two, three years in a row saying that, well, we need to do this, so we need extra dollars. So that's why we put it at, this will complete the project at that cost.
Vice Chair Bentley, do you want to say something?
No.
Sorry. Moving on to school and town cooperation, economic development, I think we actually have done, so I'm going to preface these before we get into involves of this, between the joint session with the school board, and I met with Chair of the school board and have our combined recommendations that we're bringing to our bodies this, over this coming week, to discuss an economic development, the fact that we started Economic Development Committee, and later in this week, later in this meeting, we're going to be nominating individuals to join it. I think we have done steps forward there. I think those are probably, to me, some of the best steps you could take forward. Is there anything else we should be doing concretely as far as this council's concerned to move those forward? In that case, move on to two. Put the community on a path to long-term economic health. I think the Economic Development Committee is a piece of that, but I'm not sure if that's all of it. Go ahead, Vice Chair Bentley.
So is in finances. I think A and E will both, you know, we'll be in bed of long-term economic health, and we know what our economic situation is, and we're, you know, what monies are coming in and what monies are going out, and we're not giving away, you know, sending money back, impact fees back to people because we didn't do the right thing, and we didn't collect these bills. I mean, I think all those things, A and E will go with number two.
Counselor Zink.
This to me is one of, talking about assignment for, for a new town administrator. I think there has been, has been some debate as to whether our community, what path our community is in terms of its long-term growth. Some will argue we, we're, we're a, we'll do okay, and some will argue it's a bridge embutment. And I think in terms of that long-term economic health, I agree absolutely with what he just said, it's a financial analysis. It involves the school and the town, and it involves economic development from a resource standpoint. And I guess in the private world, we would talk about a business plan, where you look at your revenues and your expenses and your expected trends, and I don't think we as a community have a particularly well-done scenario. We've heard from, from Don Jutton at MRI that he thinks we've got some, some pretty major obstacles ahead of us. But I think before we return the community to long-term health, we need some kind of analysis done based on projections of revenues and expenses that can either verify that we're in, we're in good shape, not so good shape, terrible shape, or whatever it is. So I'd like to see that turned into a consolidated report on the financial health of the community. And I don't know who could do it, because it involves the school and the town.
What do other people think about that? Would that be information that would be helpful to the council making decisions moving forward?
A business plan? Yes.
My, my concern is that, and I've said this to several counselors before, one-on-one, that this, the shock of the tax rate, to me, was just because for a while, we've sort of been living in a world where we didn't understand how much it costs for what we paid for, because we had the ability to buy the tax rate down. For a long time, we had the ability to bring the tax rate down, but structurally, we were living beyond, I don't want to say living beyond our means, but we had, buying the tax rate down is not structural changes to allow us to live in a more affordable community. And what we saw when we couldn't buy the tax rate down this last year is what it really cost to pay for the things that we're getting. And that, I think that for us to be on a long-term, long-term path to economic health, we need to ensure that the cost of living in this town, to literally live in this town, is a feasible amount for the individuals, for, for your average individual. And maybe that's the way to get about it, I'm not sure how to get to that point, but I do know that we need to look at structural changes if we're going to maintain affordability within this community. That's my take on it. And maybe it's, it's not just the business plan, it's also looking at, it's looking at the revenue side, it's looking at the expenditure side too, it's looking at where, how are we structured right now? Is the structure that we currently have of our organization the most effective and efficient structure for the town moving forward? Is it, as Don Jutton said before, is it a 19th century structure in the 21st century right now that we're, that we're dealing with? So, Counselor Levy.
You know, we did the downtown TIF, and I bet if I asked most people what the town spent on the downtown TIF, they wouldn't know. It was originally bonded for two million for the town. We ended up spending about nine and a half million. And I think it would be helpful when we do these things and make decisions, that we actually have a plan for what's coming in and where the money's coming from. You know, at the last meeting, we were talking about doing the road, and the roads and putting money toward the roads. We're spending a little over a hundred thousand dollars now, and we're going to be spending about $400,000 over the next seven, excuse me, not seven, but four or five years anyway. And I just asked the question, where's the money coming from? And, and, you know, I, I think it would be really helpful to look at our, the dollars that are coming in, and make determinations as to where the money is coming from, before we necessarily allot the money. And I'm sure we'll come up with the $400,000 one way or another, but I don't really have a handle on, on what the town's bringing in versus what it's spending. And, and I think, you know, if people had been maybe a little bit more cognizant of the downtown, they may have spent a little bit less. I mean, I think it would have still been very nice, but maybe it wouldn't have been nine and a half million. And it seems like a lot of times we, we start down a path, and then, you know, I just looked at the attorney fees that we've been spending for the coalition. And, and I'm not going to mention the numbers, because I don't know how much of that is non-public or not, but they're significantly higher than what we were, we were told we were going to spend. And things just seem to get out of, out of balance. So I think it would be helpful to really have an idea of where we're going to be, and decide how much we feel like we want to spend, and stay within those boundaries. And if not, then, then if we're going to spend more, then take it from somewhere else, but not just spend. So that's my take on it.
So how do we get that? I mean, it sounds like you and Counselor Zink are speaking in somewhat similar terms, like different terms, it's a similar concept, but we're looking at, like, an idea like for a projection of revenues, and then we have to sort of make a decision as to where we want, what we think individuals should rightfully be absorbing structurally in their tax rate, as opposed to just assuming we need to spend more, so we just have to tax more. Counselor Bentley.
Yeah, I think, you know, again, I think it comes back to number four item agenda of the night, will be a little piece of that, getting a town manager on, in here and getting Steve up to speed, and, you know, he'll piece, he'll have a piece of that. It's, I think it's going to be a combination of things, not going to be a magic wand that's going to put us into the long term. I brought it up three years in a row, let's sell the damn property we own, the Don properties we own, that's doing nothing for us. That's, maybe, you know, maybe it's a hundred thousand, maybe it's 900,000, but it's money we're paying someone to mow our fields, and, and we're spending money and not getting a cent from it, so I think it's going to be a combination of different things that get us there, and I think that the, the new town manager will be a big piece of it. I think the item coming up and a couple of agenda items will be a big piece of it. You know, that group there, I would think would, would certainly have a part of the plan and the business plan for our, I think that's why they've been being formed, you know, to come up with a business plan for this town.
Counselor Carmichael.
Jump on what John just said, how much land do we have?
Substantial amount, I don't know the exact number.
Who has it? Matt have that, or?
We have it.
We have it?
It's actually not. But we, we own, it was one of our goals last year, was the sale of, of town land. And maybe that is a piece of, to me, a lot of these little things like selling town land and stuff like that, it's important stuff, but it doesn't, is it following a long-term plan towards economic health? Like, it's an action, but is it following some sort of strategy? It's like a tactic, as opposed to some sort of strategy moving forward towards, are we achieving long-term economic health? But I agree, it's something that we need to, we need to consider. We considered it important enough to be a goal last year.
Or I think you use it for special projects, sell some land for, if you do need something, like Gary's saying.
Yeah.
You know, 9.2 originally was two million, you know, you got to use that for special projects.
Counselor Zink.
I think the, the, in, in its simplest form, we've got, the biggest challenge we have for us as a community is the building of a new school if we decide to do so, and then water, and then wastewater. And I, I would like to see, and maybe this is a perfect opportunity for the joint school council meetings, to have a presentation to the school and the town that says council meetings, to have a presentation to the school and the town that says these actions are going to impact tax rates by X number of dollars. And give the opportunity for the citizens to say, we, we think that's reasonable or we don't think it's reasonable. I think what we're missing now is the information. I agree with Counsel Levy. I think that if we look at revenues and expenses and our obligations, what do they add up to in a tax rate? Is it 30 bucks or 42 bucks? And if it's 42, we know we can't afford it. And I think we need that slap in the face of reality that says, stop wishing for the, for the candy land here because it doesn't exist. I have a personal opinion that it, it slap in the face wouldn't feel too good, based on what, what I think. So maybe on this one, my suggestion would be to make this community on a long-term path to economic health, a combination of putting the school and the town together, their budget impacts, and having somebody look at them, because we can't do it individually.
I, I agree. I think, I just don't want to leave this until we have some sort of concrete action. So maybe the concrete action is, as a council, we direct the town finance director to get with the school, if the school is willing to, and to look at, look at that situation. Does everyone find that is the concrete step here?
Mm-hmm.
And to come back with an assessment?
Basically doing the efficiency recommendations.
Yes. I know, yeah. Well, it's, it's good. Yeah. The last.
Sorry, so you were going to try the tax rate impact.
The, I mean, how far out, how far out do councilors think we should look?
Can I make a?
Yeah.
Bob Coffey has done some work on projects. Maybe if Bob could get together with Matt and talk about it. I know in Bob's, at Bob's projects, he did not put together water and wastewater in school, but that could be easily added. So I think he's already done a projection that maybe you and the school business person could, just as a starting point.
Thank you, Bud. Last piece is, and this is something we really haven't talked about very much at all outside of the Efficiency Committee, is effectively manage town facilities. So, and I don't think in our, there's one thing in facilities management we talked, I talked about with the school chair and the school board chair, and I think, to me, I think it's a, it's more of a minor element, it's about the groundskeeping, as opposed to the major elements of actually managing our facilities. And we had talked during this process about doing some sort of inventory of facilities or, there was something, we were, some concrete step we could take to ensure that we're actually managing our facilities proactively as opposed to reactively. And we've done nothing on this moving forward. So I would love to hear people's ideas as to how we could proactively manage our facilities. Go ahead, Vice Chair.
It's one of the, we were asked to come up with goals for the new town administrator, and one of mine, I think, was my number three goal, or it doesn't really matter, was about this, addressing this. We've, we've had some folks come and give some recommendations, just put it into the town hall and, and on energy savings, and I think sometimes we look at all or nothing. We looked at, you know, 118 windows, where, you know, do we need to do the downstairs windows that, you know, the downstairs isn't used too much? And I think we need to do some of those things. There's a lot of technology out there, lights that go off when you're not in a room, and lights that go off in the hallway when you're not in a room, and heating and air conditioning and here, and, and, you know, we can only control here, but again, the school. For every time a toilet flushes here with 35 town employees or 50 town employees, there's 250 town employees and students up the school. So my personal thing is I'd like to have that as one of his, the town administrator's goals, to make sure each department under him is coming up with ideas how to manage their facilities, not their people, not their, you know, better come up with a plan on how you're going to save X amount of dollars for each area.
Anyone else? Counsel Zink.
Following our last meeting, we asked MRI to put together a proposal on this issue along with several others, a timetable, cost estimate, and so forth. And I believe they submitted it to the, to, to Mr. Coffey. Nobody's, I, I don't know if there's been any discussion about it, but there is a proposal in that proposal as to how we might tackle evaluating town facilities. I think there are some outside consultants, like some of the Control, Johnson Controls and so forth, that'll come in and do a, do a, do a project for you. So I think that one's, I think we're okay on that one.
Could, could we get that to all the councilors so that, so that we can review it?
Yep.
I, I just want to make sure we're moving forward. Okay. And after we do that, we can make decisions as to what actions we want to take. Great. I just want to make sure, I'm very, I'm hell bent, we started these, we set these goals, and I know what happens if, you know, we don't stay on them, like consistently go back to where we are with the goals and evaluate whether or not we're moving forward on them, is that they won't get accomplished. So, but we only have so many months up here, and we're going to accomplish these goals. Next item, Resolution 2012-1304, Municipal Transportation Fund Withdrawal, $50,000. Do I have to read this resolution?
It was read before.
Yeah. Town of Newmarket, New Hampshire, Resolution 2012 to 13 dash 04, relating to the withdrawal of $50,000 from the municipal transportation fund for the purpose of road maintenance. Whereas the town of Newmarket allocated $125,000 for paving in fiscal year 2012, and whereas the municipal transportation fund, RSA 261153 Roman numeral four, parentheses A, was established to fund improvements in the local and regional, or regional transportation system, including roads, bridges, bicycles, and pedestrian facilities, parking and intermodal facilities, and transportation. Funds may be used for engineering, right-of-way acquisition and construction costs of transportation facilities, and for the operating of capital costs of transportation, of public transportation only. Funds may also be used as matching funds for state and federal funds allocated for regional transportational improvements. Whereas the municipal transportation fund currently has a balance of $342,621, and whereas the analysis conducted by University of New Hampshire Department T2 suggests that increasing our road paving funding by, in fiscal year 13, by $50,000 will result in approximately $100,000 of savings over the next five years. And now therefore, be it resolved, the Newmarket Town Council does hereby approve withdrawal of $50,000 from the municipal transportation fund for the purpose of providing additional funding for road paving. Given this, at the Town Council chambers in Newmarket, New Hampshire, this first day of August in the year of our Lord, 2012. Counsel Branch.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2012-2013-04 as read.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. My only question is, and maybe Matt, you have your JD, you can answer this. Does this require a second reading and a public hearing?
It's, it's.
It's a resolution to withdraw money from the municipal transportation fund.
I believe it needs a second hearing, it needs a public, public hearing.
You believe it needs a public hearing?
Yeah.
We discussed it last time.
We discussed it last time.
Technically, this is not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing, this is a conversation.
It wasn't posted as such.
Right.
So we can, we can make it on the next agenda?
We can put on the next agenda as a public hearing and move.
I will draw my motion.
Motion is with.
I will draw my second.
And we'll consider that a first reading. Then we will move on, and we'll make sure that that gets on the agenda and the public hearing gets posted.
Wait, just.
Go ahead, Counsel.
We did vote, though. Last time, we voted on it, just for whatever it's worth, I think it was six to one. So we did vote on it. I don't, I mean, I think we voted to.
We voted to support it.
Yeah.
And so that Director Malaski could move forward.
So that technically does not make it a public hearing. Is that what you're saying?
Right, exactly. It's not a technical public hearing.
Okay. No, I mean, today wasn't a public hearing, that's what I meant.
Yes. Counsel Branch.
If I can just ask, Matt?
Yeah.
Matt, I know CIPs require the public hearings and everything, but who is the spending authority on, on this particular fund?
I believe it's the town council.
So do we really need to? I guess it's better to be safe.
I would rather err on the side of the public being able to talk to it.
And that's an odd thought, that one.
Yeah, all right.
And Rick, is it the end of the world if we don't release this $50,000 to you right now?
No. No, I mean, I, I was able to get the bids, I got the last bid Monday, and the pricing was Bell &amp; Flynn at 74 a ton, Continental was 75, and Pike Industries was 79. So.
So the best one was what, 74 a ton?
Bell &amp; Flynn at 74 per ton. And Chief Seer's not here this week, but as long as we can, I'm assuming we're going to go with the low bid on that.
Yeah.
And I already know that it's in the works, we can start the process.
So we're not slowing down your ability?
No, I can move, I have a lot of prep work to do, so.
Okay. Counsel Branch.
Just one question, Rick. Are you planning on any reclaiming this cycle?
All overlay and shim.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Rick.
Thanks.
Efficiency Committee recommendations. I know that there's individuals talk about auto gas and to talk about health insurance. We'll allow them to go first, then we'll go over, well, actually, can I really quickly just say, you can come on up while I'm saying this, what the chair of the school board and I meant about. We talked about the four things that we all want to talk about, finance consolidation, town administrator and superintendent determine the cost of the grounds, facilities management, insurance, and the deliberative session. Just to get what the chair and I, the chair of the school board and I spoke about, we would like to, and we can talk about this more in depth, but some of it overlaps that's there to talk about. Have the town administrator and superintendent direct Matt and Christine from the finance side to investigate ways to build efficiencies between their two agencies. Have the town administrator and superintendent determine the cost of maintaining school grounds and compare that against the cost of outsourcing the groundskeeping for the town, so we can see which is cheaper outsourcing versus insourcing. Facilities management, we were a little more vague here, but we discussed having the town administrator and superintendent investigate what combined facilities management would look like and report back to us. Insurance, I know that there was, there was apparently Julie Glover, when she was here, had done an investigation into combined insurance, and I contacted her, and she's going to look for the paperwork on that, so that we can all read what her initial investigation was. And then the deliberative session one day, we were, we were both in favor of that. So we could talk more about those afterwards, but I wanted everyone to have that context before we heard this.
Appreciate it. Just to give you an update, we got from Jim Hayes authorization to do the same health insurance analysis that we're doing for the town. I'm just waiting for the letter of authorization to come from Jim, and as soon as we get that, we'll be doing the analysis like we did for the town. What we found out on the town side is that we can make this adjustment anytime during the course of the year with 30 days' written notice. So I know you're not making a decision tonight, but if you were to make a decision tonight, we could in fact make that change September 1st-ish. If you make a decision on the next meeting, then it would be October 1st. We, we also got some clarifications from LCG. Some of the information they provided, Paul and John originally was a little vague, they got a lot of clarifications. So what they're going to present to you tonight is the latest and greatest numbers and, and some options on what might be the best way to go. When we get done with this, then we'll bring in Jim Pruder to talk about the auto gas.
Paul Doherty. Once we clarified the, what we could do, okay, just a second, I'm going to find it. Well, you've already, it's the same, Assistant. You've already given them this, correct? Have not. Okay. The bottom line is that without a surcharge, the maximum amount that the town can self-insure is 25% of the deductible. Based on that, I put together a plan that would recommend a change from your current employee deductible of $250 to $750. Using the $1,000 deductible plan with the maximum premium reduction and putting on top of that the estimated claims and fees, I'm projecting a savings of $127,773. Now, the employee's deductible would go up, but within my projection, I am maintaining the other items that are different, that are, have higher co-pays. I am recommending that you self-insure those co-pay differences so that the employee will not notice any change as far as office visit co-pays are concerned, and also the number of days of PT coverage, which is cut dramatically by going to the new plan. But it's such a rare item that you could easily self-insure that and bring it back up to the level that it's currently at. Those are the only differences, really. The, the prescription plan is identical, so we're not involved in, in handling any prescriptions. So I said, all right, what happens to the employee's contribution to the plan if they're, if they're required to pay 20% of the, of the monthly cost? So I looked at that, and I said, all right, the, the employee would be paying 20% on a smaller number. So what is that annually? It works out that the employee contribution would be reduced by approximately $25,000. And I got each one of the categories calculated there for you. The maximum cost of, to the employee of going from a $250 deductible to a $750 deductible, a $500 a year increase, times the number of employees, single, two-person, and family coverages, comes out to $38,000. So, so therefore, if they're saving $25,000 in payroll contributions, the additional cost to the, to the town of keeping the employee whole would be $13,000. And that $13,000 could be given to the employee through a smaller payroll deduction or, or some other method. But, and that would, if you opted to do that, it would, that would come out of the projected savings of $127,773. So any way you cut it, no matter what you do, there's a, there's a tremendous savings potential here, well over $100,000. And Bob included another option, they have another plan, Blue Cross Blue Shield offers another plan that has a $1,000 deductible, but it's pre, the premium, I think, is 12% higher, and they don't have any restrictions on what you can self-insure. But you're going from a, from a raw savings of about $127.7 down to $53. It makes no sense at all. Whereas you can simply take some of the large savings and maintain, and use it to provide a higher contribution to the employee so that their out-of-pocket would remain the same. Actually, it would be an improvement because not everybody uses the deductible. So, and I'm talking about funding everybody to their maximum exposure. Now, this, this doesn't get into like tax-free dollars versus taxable dollars and things of that nature, but, but those are relatively small numbers. The implementation, my numbers are all based on a 12-month projection, of course. Two months have already gone by, and it looks like it's going to be three. So whatever is the effective date, like if it's September 4th, this number would be, be reduced by two twelfths and so forth. Any questions for?
Counsel Levy.
I hadn't seen, I hadn't seen any of this material before, and I, I can't even begin to extrapolate anything from it. But frankly, what I would appreciate it is, if we're going to discuss this, it would be nice if we got the information before the meeting. I think it would be nice if it was in the same format as your last, last one, which this looks totally different to me from what we got last time, which I happen to have with me. Last time, you had option one, option two, and then you had the, you know, the cost for each pay and whatnot, and this looks very different, you know, basically from what I saw before. So if we could have it in a similar format so we could try to make heads or tails. So if we could have it in a similar format, so we could try to make heads or tails. While I have you, can I ask him a couple of quick questions about, just to save him coming in and then me asking when he comes back? Are office and ER costs part of the town's self-insurance?
There would be a portion of those self-insured, because the co-pays are increasing. So, for example, the ER co-pay currently is $75, it would go to $100. So to keep it at 75, you'd self-insure $25 a visit to the ER.
Okay.
Office visits go from $20 to, I think it's 25 and 40, it's from memory, I got it here someplace. And I've also built into the projected cost, the town self-insuring the co-pay to whatever the current level is, $20, so that the employee would not sustain any out-of-pocket loss from that.
Okay. And then the last thing I'll ask is if, if they don't use site of service, and they want to go to the hospital, who's going to pay for the delta between those two? Who pays for the increased cost of the hospital versus site of service?
The, the plan itself has not changed. Blue Cross Blue Shield parameters are still there.
Okay.
So they have, if you're talking about using like a surgery center or something like that versus the hospital?
Yeah, in other words, yeah.
Yeah, the benefit there is, still exists. I believe there's an incentive built into the Blue Cross Blue Shield plan to do that. None of this affects any of that. The plan is identical, but the only thing that changes is the deductible and the rate. So, if you think of it, your current plan is a $250 deductible, it goes to $1,000. All the other features of the plan.
Seven fifths or a thousand? Didn't you say it was going to be?
Well, no. The employee's exposure would go from $250 to $750, and the town, but the deductible is $1,000. So the town would self-insure $250, which is the maximum amount that they will allow you to self-insure without a 10% surcharge. 10% surcharge would be ridiculous, to pay that.
Counselor Branch.
Would you be able to, and I'm asking this because, you know, I don't, I don't think we're, as a council, we're ready to do anything on this this evening, or potentially even our next meeting. But would you be able to, as a presenter, present to the employees and explain to them exactly what this means to them?
Of course.
Because, I mean, I really think that that's important, because first of all, you still need to deal with the police union, whatever form it's in. And I think that, you know, before we can look at this and make a decent assessment of it, we need to see what concerns or what issues that the employees may have. You know, bottom line is, it's going to save dollars. Bottom line is, he's telling us that this doesn't change the plan, in essence. And it also saves the employee potentially dollars. So, you know, it's one of those, maybe too good to be true, but if you present it to the employees and they buy into it, how can we not, as a council, then buy into the program also?
Could, can we actually see whatever agreement we'd be entering into?
With me?
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, I think that that is like the missing piece of all of this. If we saw whatever agreement we'd be getting into, I think that, and we're able to review that, I think we could all make the decision based on that.
I can, I can, I have it, I have it in writing.
Yeah, if you could just provide, somehow get it out to everyone, so that we can read it before we get here, and then we can get into the conversation about that. That'd be great.
Counselor Levy.
Since you brought that up while you're doing that, I just had two other notes. And I'm, your other numbers didn't add up, but since they've changed, I'm not going to bother bringing that up, but is the fee being added to the rate that we're getting? In other words, the fee we're looking at, is your fee already in there?
Yes.
Or is, okay, so the $3,000's already built in? Or whatever it was, $3,000, didn't you say it was $3,800?
It's more like $2,100, I think.
Oh, I thought it was over, I thought it was over $3. So that's, so it's built in, that was my question, how is the $3,000 being incorporated into the price? And is LGC's charge for admin already built in as well?
Yes, sir.
So everything's in there? All loaded? Okay, thank you.
Counselor Carmichael.
Yes, I like Counselor LeBranch talking about presenting this to the employees themselves. So, we're, are you brushing that off by saying we're going to begin? Oh, we're still going to have that?
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm for it. Are other counselors, does any of the counselor have an issue with it?
I think they should be.
You better do it.
Yeah.
You have to do it.
We have no town administrator sitting here.
Yeah.
Easy for us to.
Chair of the Efficiency Committee, would you mind coordinating with the town administrator to, and get them linked up together?
Absolutely.
The acting town administrator, get this set up.
I also believe he's talked to the representative of the police union, and they were taking that information back and having a conversation. I was expecting him to be here tonight, so.
Yeah. So, but if you could make sure that, thank you very much. Any other questions? So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Having a staple at these meetings. Any other discussion around this? We're going to have the town employees get briefed, and then we're going to see the documentation.
And can it be in the same format as they gave us before, so it's sort of apples for apples?
Yes, yeah, I would love, it would be great.
In other words, the way you presented it before is the option one, option, you know, you broke it down.
Up here, Gary. I understand, yeah.
He's looking at it. Excuse me. We'll make it so.
Next.
Jim Prue's here for AutoGas. My conversations with the chief is that he's supporting the concept of moving to AutoGas. I think, I haven't completed the circuit on some warranty issues between a new police car, the Ford that the chief is looking for, so I'll have to circle back, I've been kind of busy the last two weeks. But the chief said that he would be willing to try this on some existing patrol cars, and I think we just need to coordinate that. As, as another opportunity, Jim has been able to procure for a week's trial, a lawnmower for Ricky to try out, and a staff to try out using LP gas. So I'm going to try to coordinate that, so we get that lawnmower here before the summer's out, so they can try it out. So let me have Jim come up and give his portion of the presentation, and we'll get the information to you after this meeting. You copy?
We had had a little bit of a change in the original proposal that we first presented, and I was hoping that you guys had gotten this before right now, but on the mower idea, the propane gas association of New England has a commercial-grade mower that they have on loan, and give us the ability to bring out and have whoever wants to try it out, try it out, they can use it for a week or whatever, we'll coordinate bringing it in, taking it out, and any documentation that you all would need, but it's there for, it's there for that reason, so. What we had gone back and forth with, between Chief Seer and Bob and myself, was trying to come up with a way, a creative way, that maybe we could do something that would expedite the conversion of a vehicle, minimize the amount of money that would have to come out of the town. And basically, what I've come up with is an option where we would lease the, we would own the hardware, we would lease the hardware to the town for nominal, like a dollar a year type of a deal, and then tie the program back into a gallons type, you know, over some period of time that we expect that it would, it would take for us to get our return and our investment, if you will, with the hometown discount included. But, you know, we're looking at conversion cost of somewhere around $1,000 is what the, is what the market seems to be, and we would put a cap on that in our, in this proposal. And again, I apologize that this wasn't sent to you before, but basically, in this proposal, we're suggesting a, the town pick up the cost of the conversion, which would be between $1,000 and $1,350. And then what we would be able to do is, we could guarantee a, basically a cost per gallon savings below whatever you get for a gasoline price. So if you have, you know, a town bid that goes out, we would guarantee 70 cent per gallon savings off of whatever that rate is. So if you're paying $3.50 a gallon, we're going to guarantee that you would pay no more than $2.80 a gallon for propane. As an example, those numbers may or may not be accurate based on what, what your prices are today, but, and we're able to do that by buying futures and doing some things on the backside of that to protect us and be able to pass that savings on to you. The projected savings at that rate, and we're calculating about 15,000 gallons, which would equate to around 48 to 60-month term, would save the town on that particular vehicle The warranty information has been given to the chief and shared with Bob as well, and it's pretty inclusive, and again, I think that's something that probably you all are going to want to see individually directly, so I'll forward that to them and presume that they'll forward that to you. But it's, I say boilerplate, but it's been, it's being done, you know, in, I don't know, 2,500, 3,000 vehicles around the country, new vehicles that are, face the same question that you posed. So, it's in place, it's being worked, it's a working document, and to my knowledge, has been tested for effectiveness and held up. So, understanding that's a concern, and as it should be, on a new vehicle. If an existing vehicle that's out of warranty was converted, we still have, we still have a way to do additional protection. Again, it's sort of a rider on any other warranty issues that may come up from that. So, again, I apologize that you don't have this before, but that's what's being talked about now, and I think that the maximum out-of-pocket you're looking at is, like I say, somewhere between $1,000 and $1,350. It'll depend a little bit on where that conversion takes place, but I think it's probably closer to the $1,000 than the $1,350. But we would, we would put a cap on that, if it was anything over that, we would absorb it. I don't know that you have any, a whole lot of information, they ask a lot of questions, so I'm, I'm open.
Do you actually have a lot of questions coming up?
Okay, good.
But I would ask that, and you've already said it, that we'll get all the information consolidated, all the backup paperwork, and any agreements we'd be entering into.
Yep.
But Sheriff Bentley?
Two questions. One is, so if you have an issue, can you just go to, are there local mechanics that work on this? Would our own mechanics be able to?
Yeah, so there's two, there's two parts to that equation. One is the original equipment, right? So let's say it's a Ford. So you would go to Ford for that work, okay? Anything on the system that we put in, on the equipment that we own, we would work on. We would have certified people that would do that work. So, I think initially what we talked about was having Automotive Excellence become a certified conversion center. The focus within our group has changed in that, the feeling is that we can be, we can be a lot more efficient in, by creating what they're calling mobile conversion teams, where they're coming in and they're converting vehicles on-site, let's say, in our garage. Convert your vehicle in our garage. After the actual conversion, the amount of work or maintenance that's done on these is basically a filter change, which we can do. We could train Automotive Excellence to do, it's not a real difficult thing to do, so. So the answer to your question was, on the, on the original equipment side of it, yeah, you still go to your fleet mechanic, or you go to your local dealer, or you go to whoever it is? And that warranty and that backup paperwork protects you from any issues that they would have with an aftermarket conversion.
And the second question, I don't remember if I saw it last week, where is this tank located, far safety-wise? Where is this? In the trunk?
In the vehicle? Yeah. It's in the, it's either in the, they're DOT-rated tanks, so they're, you know, used in, used in like RVs, is probably the most prevalent use of them. But they're either mounted where the spare tire is, let's say, in a, if you had an SUV, if you had like a Ford Explorer, I'm not sure what vehicle they're, they're looking at, the new one, but I think that was one of the ones that somebody had mentioned. So it would go where the spare tire goes, if it was like a Ford Explorer type of a vehicle. If it was Crown Vic, it would go in the trunk up on that landing, if you will, like you look in the trunk, and then there's like a space up above. They fit in there and they vent to the outside, and all the fill equipment is on, all the fill adapters on the outside of the vehicle.
Thanks, sir.
Counselor LeBranch.
It's my understanding that Ford Motor Company from the factory will not warranty your vehicle if this change is done when purchased, correct?
No, I don't think so. No, that's the whole, that was the whole sticking point of, that was my sticking point too, of, is it going to avoid the warranty? And the paperwork that I have and the supporting documents that I have that are being used every day, that say, no, that's not accurate.
That's not accurate?
Correct.
So, so we could put this on a new vehicle?
Yes.
On a, now, the question comes to mind.
And have, and have the protection.
For example, the Crown Vics are no longer available as a police, well, they're no longer available as a vehicle. What if, have you checked with, for example, like, I know a lot of state police use Dodge Chargers. Is that application the same?
Yes.
Warranties available and everything?
Yep. Yeah, it's a, and you can read it when you get it, but there's a, I'm not an expert in law, but, and I don't even know if RSA is the right term, but there is a law that says they have to, they have to honor this type of stuff.
Counselor Carmichael.
Yeah. Jim, how long is the trial you're looking for?
Well, I, if we do a conversion and we provide the equipment, it's just a gallon, so I, based on what we've saw, looked at as far as what their annual consumption is on a typical frontline vehicle, it's somewhere between four and five years is what it looks like.
Okay, so if we want to say we don't like this after two years, what happens? What's the cost to us to get out of the deal?
I would write that into the agreement, and probably just the cost to re-convert the vehicle and bring back the equipment, because it would have, it would still have market value somewhere else. So, yeah, if you brought it back and gave it back, I'd find home for it somewhere else. And I'd be willing to put that in the agreement.
Any other questions? If we could see, much like I asked the insurance, what the agreement language would be and everything?
Yeah.
It'll allow us to read that beforehand, then make a decision at a meeting.
Yeah, okay.
You going to ask something?
Nope.
All right. Jim, thank you so much.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I want to go back to the other elements of, that we were talking about of the efficiency, or, I'm sorry, of the meeting I had with Matt, you may, you want to hold on to this one real quick? Literally like two minutes. One of the things, just to go over the recommendations that Cliff and I had, or the Efficiency Committee recommendations, where we found areas where we think we can agree. One is us to direct the TA, and he would work with the school board to direct the superintendent, to talk to Matt, or Matt and Christine get together to investigate ways they can build efficiencies in their work. This again, obviously is going to pull Matt off of other things he's working on, it's going to take a time commitment of it, and us want to make sure that, since we don't actually have a TA here, we're all in agreement as to whether or not that's something we want to direct his attention to. Al, can I, Counselor's take?
From a council standpoint, a council's standpoint, and the one that's worked on the Efficiency Committee for the last year, I, I'm extremely disappointed that, that you've come to the, that the two chairs have come to the conclusion that we're going to do this ourselves. I will tell you that for 14 months, we've been working on this insurance thing, and have never gotten the data we need to get it done. I will tell you that we've talked about finance consolidation time and time and time again, and we've never gotten anything done. And if we don't have somebody driving this effort, it will not be successful, in my opinion. So to make these assignments for... So to make these assignments for our town administrator and school superintendent to evaluate finance consolidation, or, we've had this discussion so many times, and there were such strong opinions about what will work and what won't work, this to me is a death knell for the whole project. And that's how strongly I feel about it. We've got to have somebody standing up there and holding our feet to the fire and saying, this is where we're going to move ahead on finance consolidation. Somebody that's got some knowledge of where finance consolidation has worked in municipal environments, where facilities management consolidation has worked. We have an insurance issue that these folks spoke to us about tonight that has been, that hundred thousand dollars, and I don't care whether it's a hundred thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars, that money's been sitting on the table for years and we haven't had the expertise to even pick it up. So all I can say, and I'll, I guess I'm about as vocal as I can be about this, if we think we are going to lead ourselves to resolve these issues, to be objective, and if we think we understand the 2012 model for town government, we're fooling ourselves. It just, it will not work. And I hope citizens take this to heart and don't allow us to slip backwards into having our people make some, what are going to be very difficult decisions, organizationally, financially, because it won't happen. It's, it's too painful. So that's, that's all I'll say. I'm, I'm really disappointed that you've come to the conclusion that we're going to have our own people manage these. I think you're ducking the, I think you're ducking the bullet. Thank you.
Counselor, or Vice Chair Bentley.
Oh, that wasn't a burden, so.
Oh, all right. Counselor LeBranche.
I'm, I'm going to agree with Counselor Zink, and I'm, and I'm going to tell you why. Because for a number of years, as a counselor, I was told that we can't combine the dates. We can't do this, we can't do that. And until we started up this, this efficiency committee and Don Jutton sat in this room with a group of us very early on, saying, of course you can do it. You know, you gotta, you gotta do this, you gotta do that, but this is how you do it. You know, I was always under the assumption it can't be done. And I, I think, from my perspective, what Counselor Zink, and I'm not trying to put words in his mouth, but I think what he's saying is, we need somebody from the outside saying that, why can't you do this? You know, this, this certainly can be done. Yeah, you've got to do it differently than the way you're doing it now, but in the end, the end result is you've, you've consolidated, you've saved the community some, some money by doing this. So, you know, at the very least, I, I think that there needs to be a dialogue with, with an individual such as Don Jutton, and try to move the process along so that it's just an, it's another set of eyes looking out there. It's not that I have the distrust, it's just that I come from being told, no, you can't do that, to, yeah, we did it, and we did it in like three months.
So I suppose my question becomes, if this is the compromise that's, we're able to reach with the school board of how to move forward, do we just say, because the compromise is not palatable to us, we are going to do nothing? Counselor Zink.
No, I, I, I think this is truly a time when the community needs to step in. We've, we've, we've had the community, we've had support groups, we've had steering committees, and this is, this to me is, is an absolute lack of recognition of what the citizens are asking for. This is, this, this, I think the insurance is, the deliberative session is a great example of, we, we've been told for years we can't do it. I've been told for six years on the budget committee, there's nothing we can do on insurance. We've gone out and we've looked at it. And I got to tell you, I don't think we have the expertise to make those judgments. So to answer your question, Mr. Chair, I hope that the citizens will look at this thing as dodging the bullet, and I hope they'll hold our feet to the fire. And if, if, if they don't, so be it. But I, I feel a very strong sentiment out there that we need some outside management and some outside eyes.
Matt, you can probably take, you can probably take care of what you guys need to take care of. I feel like this is going to be a conversation. Any other comments? So I'm on the record at the last time we got together with the efficiency committee saying, and I still believe it, that nibbling at the hedges is not going to deal with the problem we have facing us, that we need structural change in this town. I mean, major, I honestly think major structural change. You can't be dipping our toes in the waters of whoever knows what you dip your toes in. We need to actually like rip the Band-Aid off, and it's going to be tough, we have to do it. That being said, I also know that we have to do something that all bodies involved can agree to. And I would say that I probably, everyone up here probably doesn't agree with me about the, how far I think we probably need to go in order to, to get ourselves on a truly healthy path. So I guess what I'm looking for is, do we want to go back to the school board and say, not enough? Do we want to say that we will do these, but there needs to be external management over this? I guess I'm looking for the consensus of the council as to what direction, what direction we should be heading with the recommendation, or the recommendations that the chair of the school board and myself came together to decide. This is something that can be palatable for both of our, our boards. Vice Chair Bentley.
Well, I mean, I think I said downstairs when we had the joint meeting that to do what we really need to do, I might be along with you, Mr. Chair, on, we need huge structurally changes and structure changes, and that might take years. What I'm talking about, like what a lot of Massachusetts, having one board that controls the town and the school, that, you know, I think the biggest thing I keep hearing is, is, you know, you know, blanked at this and blanked into this, and it becomes a throw a grenade over the fence, and you didn't give raises, but they gave raises, or you did this, or they didn't do that. And, you know, the town gets a lot of the, a lot of the eyes and a lot of the newspaper articles and a lot of the people coming up here. But I think that's, it's getting a lot of more attention now, but I don't know what we can do. I think our hands are tied. We can do things to appease and do some little things, and I don't even mean little, I mean, maybe if the, the school with the insurance, you know, that's huge savings. If we can save a hundred thousand with a town, then what could we save with the school? But...
The school did say that they, one of the other things that the chair of the school board said is that they are willing to look into consolidating insurance.
And that's great, that's great. But I agree, it doesn't look like we can do it ourself. We need some help and direction, someone else besides people sitting in these seats. And, but I think the quicker we start looking at the long-term structure change, the better. I mean, we were told we couldn't have the meetings together and we, we got that. And I think there needs to be a different group here, and I think that process needs to start soon, myself.
Counselor Levy.
I might be missing something, but I think if, if we could get finance consolidation, facilities management consolidation, insurance consolidation, combining the deliberative session, I'd consider that a pretty good, pretty good start. It would be nice to have a, a well-defined cost benefit on a couple of those line items, but I think that's a pretty good, I think that's a pretty good start. I don't see that kicking the can down the road. I mean, I mean, I think that's, I'd be happy to see that. You'd be talking about several hundred thousand dollars, if not a half a million or more in savings. I think the deliberative session in one day will, will, will be a huge thing for people, not just a monetary thing, but a philosophical and a, you know, an important thing for people who have trouble getting out and whatnot. I don't see anything that's, you know, outrageously avoiding dealing with things. I mean, I don't know, you know, how, if you need a facilitator, so, you know, I mean, I think the easiest way to get a facilitator is to sort of figure out what the dollars are going to, who's going to save what, whose jobs are either going to be consolidated or shifted around, so people know what, you know, what this all amounts to financially. If you're going to, if you're going to consolidate finance, then you're going to have to make a determination of how many employees are going to stay, how many are going to go. If they're going to not go, are they going to be used somewhere else? You know, these are the details, the minutia, that really, the devil's in the, in the details. But I mean, if, if these three or four line items could get consummated, I wouldn't be unhappy. Personally, I don't want to not sound like I'm unhappy. I think this is a good start if you can get it, you know, done, but I think you need to get the details. Not you personally, but I, and I think the other thing we're forgetting is, the town administrator is going to be here in thirty days. So that will be a big part of that individual's job to, you know, start facilitating these things. Right now, we're sort of trying to, we're juggling balls. So that's my take.
Thank you, Counselor Levy. Counselor LeBranche.
The way I look at this is, we have been doing this, or at least I've been doing this for over a year now, looking, looking at this committee and trying to come up with ways. And one of the, one of the, two of the things early on were insurance and finance. And I guess the proof is in the pudding. And there's really no pudding right now. I mean, we have thirty-seven employees within the town that we anticipate on a yearly basis could, the town could save a hundred thousand dollars plus. But I think that Mr. Coffey has also mentioned that the insurance people do not have the documentation that's, that's needed to be able to present that to the other entity. So, you know, you and the chair from the school can, can go back and forth, but if you don't have somebody facilitating it, as it was mentioned, I, I don't think this goes any further than it already has.
So is the concern the fact that there's not an external individual shepherding this? Or that the compromises that were arrived at were ones that were not big enough? I guess that's the question.
My concern is, when I'm not sitting here, who's going to take my part of the fight for moving this forward? As diligently, and when Counselor Zink's no longer here, who has been a driving force behind this, who's going to be that driving force? I don't see anybody taking that approach on either side of the table. That concerns me.
Counselor Zink.
To answer your question, I think, I think a, a, I can't even think of the right term, but somebody, I, my concern is that we need an objective observer who has done this stuff before in municipalities to help guide us through the process and will serve as an objective reporter to the community as to our progress. And I'm not suggesting that the outside person set the objectives, but I am suggesting that if we take something like facilities management, that somebody on the outside will say, and it's been municipal resources up to this point, here's what we see as opportunities for you based on other communities. This is what the Beverly School District did, and they, they have one that did it, and put all their facilities together as a town and a school, and said, here are the benefits of it, here are how we suggest you get there, and we will, we will be an objective reporter as to whether we think you're doing a good job or not. I think that's what we need. We don't have, number one, it's not objective when we're doing it to ourselves. Number two, we don't know what other municipalities are doing in terms of innovative things as it relates to consolidations. And number three, there's no, there's nobody that's going to stand, there's nobody in a position within Newmarket that can speak to both the school and the town as an objective reporter. It doesn't exist. And I think without that, we'll be, we'll be unsuccessful. And I, and I'll go back to what Mike said earlier. We've been working on this insurance thing forever. We've been working on looking at combining MIS services forever. We've been looking at joint purchasing in MIS forever, and we have made zero progress. Quite the contrary, we've gone backwards in most places. We can't even speak on the same telephone system to each other. So I think the thought that we can somehow be provocative enough, informed enough, and objective enough to do this ourself is, is next to impossible.
I'm not sure if what we, and Counselor Carmichael, I know you have a comment to make, let you go. But I just want to, I'm not sure that what we said is that we have to do this all alone. We didn't even talk about who's going to be overarching and control or monitoring this. We just, the conversation was about, maybe I misunderstood the charge, maybe we both misunderstood the charge, let's go back with, was, these are the general areas we want to look at. How do we want to move forward to look into these areas? So even if an external individual came on board to look at consolidating elements of finance, wouldn't the business administrator and the interim finance director have to be a part of that conversation, driving it forward? You're just concerned about who's driving the train.
I, I'm concerned, what you, what I heard you say was that you were going to, and maybe it's my total misinterpretation, but that the town administrator and the school superintendent were going to get, oh, we were going to have Matt and the business manager in the school get together and talk about finance consolidation.
Investigate ways to build efficiencies in their work and report back to us after X amount of months.
I think that's absurd.
All right. It's totally...
Counselor Carmichael.
I'd be happy if you got the finance consolidation, facilities and the insurance deliberate is already there. I think we ought to see what happens with the thirty days when we get Steve aboard as the town administrator, and perhaps not have Matt, you know, go with Christine right now. I, I agree with you on that part. I don't think that has to be done right now. I think he's got more important things to do right now, like, you know, keep working on the books that we're doing. But when this new guy comes aboard, he's got a job ahead of him. I, I think it's feasible to keep this here, and I do think maybe we do need somebody like a Don Jutton that come in there and help out with Steve coming in and have a little fun, a little group, have a meeting or two, and see where we want to go from there. Is that who you're thinking of, John Jutton?
Well, I don't care whether it's him, but...
Yeah, no, I have no problem with somebody coming in and, but I think we should wait for the town manager or administrator to be here and be in on the meeting and so on.
It's my experience that, and I have all the faith in the world of Steve coming to be the town administrator, but it's my experience and, that if it's not driven by the school board and the town council, nothing's going to happen. That if, if we are not actively forcing the issue on all of these things, that it's going to end up, regardless of who we pay to come in outside, that it's going to end up dead in the water if we just leave it, just leave it to be. That's just my experience, my interpretation of the, of experience up to this point. So where do we go? Well, Counselor Vice Chair Bentley, I was...
Well, the original reason I pushed my button the first time is before, is as important as this joint committee, you know, committee is, before, I would want to see Matt spend any time on that. I'd like him to finish up cleaning up the books, doing the things that are in our other goals, the things we do have total control over, the town part of it. This is what we have, this is what we owe, these books are close, he's closer to solving another issue now. I mean, that, that's where I'd want to see his energies right now and, and like Chairman Carmichael said, Counselor, Counselor Carmichael said.
Congratulations.
You don't want that. You could have to...
No way, no way.
You know, let's let Steve get in, I hate to wait another thirty days, but let's let Steve get in place. Let's let Matt continue to work on closing out the things he's done. He's done some great work on finding some messes and cleaning up some messes and putting some closure to that, and then, you know, revisit it at that point. There's still not reasons we can't stop doing some of these things, but if they said they talk about insurance, that should be something they did. They should be talking about that tomorrow morning. Anyway.
Counselor Zink.
Last and final, I think we are set for August fifteenth for you and the chair of the council to present to the citizen group your conclusions. That's our next action.
August fifteenth? August 15th? I can't understand this. Did you talk about something else? August 15th is our next council meeting.
When is, when is the next citizen group meeting?
Yeah, it's scheduled one, we were waiting for.
Okay. Let me say this, the next meeting we have with the citizen group, they have asked that you and the chair of the school board address them and tell them whether these priorities are priorities that you agree on and how you're going to accomplish them. That's my understanding of the meeting.
So, I think right now, we have priorities that we agree on.
Right.
I think there is obviously between our boards, at least on our part, because they don't have met yet, they meet the ninth, I believe, on our board, the way that the chair of the school board and I came together as to a compromise is not palatable to this board. It's fairly obvious to me, to the council, that you want some external, an external individual or organization or something driving these. What I'm hearing is that these issues are not a problem, it is how we're going about doing it.
I think that's fair.
That you don't want it driven internally, and please, I want the feeling of the whole council, because there's been a lot of vocal people here, but I'm getting generally from this section, that internal driving is not the issue on an external driver to achieve these compromises, or to achieve these goals. Go ahead, Counselor Carmichael.
Yeah, maybe I presented it wrong. I think it should be internally, but I'm saying with Steve coming aboard and perhaps somebody like Don Jutton come in for a meeting, I'm not saying he has to stay for six months or a year, but I know, we should be in control of that. That's my feeling, I'm sorry if it.
Yeah, so it, does it become, is Don Jutton investigating, or, I hate to use one name, but is that person investigating how to build efficiencies in the finance department? Or is he consulting them as they're doing it? That's, to me, where there's sort of a disconnect potentially right now. Seems to me we do not have a consensus. Go ahead, Counselor Branch.
Okay, well, let's try this approach. Do as was agreed upon between the two chairs. And they, they come back, the, the finance individuals come back with a report of what they feel they can do. Also, within that report, what they feel they can't do, they cannot do. You know, if they cannot combine payrolls, you know, do payrolls at the same time, or if they can't combine accounts receivables, payables, whatever. Let them come back with what they can, and then, as opposed to having a Don Jutton or a outside individual sitting there while they're discussing the changes they can make, have, have the report presented to an individual and say, this is what they say they can do, this is what they say they can't do. What's your take on this? Does that work? It's still having another set of eyes on it, an outside set of eyes, and it gets the two finance people together to come up with ways that they think they can consolidate or, or make things more efficient, I think that's a better word, I prefer to use the word efficient, and ways that they don't think they can drive the efficient part of it.
Do you want my input?
Go ahead, Counselor Levy.
You're on the record of asking.
Yeah.
I, I think before, you know, we jump to conclusions that things can or can't be done, I think once Steve gets here, he should work in conjunction with the superintendent and you with Cliff or the, the chair of the school board. Get a consolidation, consolidation, get a consensus and tune the agreement so everybody's on the same page. Then come up with the issues that may or may not exist, which is what Mike is talking about right now. What is feasible, what isn't, what can and can't be done, sort of like the insurance, whether or not the, the union can or can't do it, et cetera. Then, based on the feedback we get, as a council, we can discuss it and see what it is we think we need to do to move it forward. And if there are true impediments that, that can't be overcome, then we're going to have to bypass those or sidestep those and pick the battles we can win. I mean, you know, I, I don't think a facilitator in and of themselves is going to be, is make those, is going to ameliorate those problems. It's not going to disappear because we have a facilitator. You know, I mean, maybe I'm incorrect, but I mean, there's a certain amount, I think, of sincerity on your part and Cliff's part. I think we had a reasonably decent meeting downstairs, considering it was, you know, a little bit all over the place, and it kind of went off on, should we build a school or not? But at the end of the day, we picked out some things that we could, we sort of agreed on, I thought, and, and you've just discussed those with him, so before we just throw the baby out with the bathwater, why don't we just drill it down a little bit and get some, some feedback? I mean, we, you know, the administrator will be here within 30 days. We can then, you, the four of you should sit down and have a meeting, I think, and go at this. And then, if it were me, I would have the finance people work with them, with, with Steve and, and Jim, and look at the issues, and then, you know, then they'll have what the issues are. There will be some, there won't be others, and right now, we're just sort of throwing, you know, darts at a wall without enough information. I mean, you know, the insurance might have saved us a fortune, but the numbers just changed from one meeting to the last one. So I mean, you know, we're not really being given all the information. I, I still haven't seen all the cost benefit with, with the vehicle yet, personally. I haven't seen all the pluses and minuses. So I mean, I, I think we're, I think we're just going around in circles. I, I think when we have, when we have a town manager that's engaged, I take people at their word until they go the other way. So far, it sounds like there's been some consensus on these issues. I don't know that, that we had the buy, buy-in a year ago, you know, since, since that's been started. So that's, the paradigm has shifted on, in that. So, before we just say it can't be done, or we've been doing this forever, let's, let's run the numbers and see what, you know, let's see what the impediments are, and then we can make some decisions. You know, you, you get what you can get. If we can get the deliberative session on the same day, and we can get finance consolidated 75% of it, and 25 we can't, I mean, are we going to just go around in circles all night about, you know, how we stink and can't do anything? I mean, I don't think that's the case. Frankly, I don't think we've been given enough information to make some of these decisions. Frankly.
I think the concern is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor Zink, that we would not be honest brokers, not we, but the, if left to our own devices, we'd not be honest brokers enough to be, ask ourselves the hard questions or force the hard issues. And an external individual would be more inclined to, to be able to drive that home. Well, don't, don't give, don't give the reactions, Counselor Levy. Or Counselor Zink.
I think I'm done.
You're disengaging?
Yeah, I think. I, I, you know, I've said my piece. I think that since we've had somebody from the outside, we have established an efficiency committee, which we didn't have before, and the outside broker helped us do that. We combined our deliberative session, and the outside broker helped us do that. We did not do it ourselves.
No, no, I was just.
Mr. Levy, I guess.
Yeah, please, Counselor Levy, please don't interrupt.
I'm done, okay.
No, but I mean, did that happen? Gentlemen, come on, we are all professionals here. Please don't interrupt, Counselor Levy. Counselor Zink, you were in the middle of, I think, a really good comment.
Thank you. We established an efficiency committee. It's made up of people within our town that have done a great job pulling the issues together. We've got a combined deliberative session that we've been trying to do for years, and we've been told we can't do it. We had a presentation tonight on insurances where there were some significant opportunities that we've been told for years that we can't do it. That was driven by the outside resource that said, yes, you can do it. The joint school-town council meeting was driven by the outside, it was not driven internally. We haven't agreed to do it yet, but that, that whole concept did not come internally, it was external. The understanding of what's going on with our tax base in other communities does not come internally, it's coming externally. And so, I would say in addition to not, it's not that we're not honest brokers, I can't imagine two finance managers getting together and saying, we only need one of us. I don't think that's fair, I don't think it's, I can't imagine it would ever happen. So it's a combination of expertise, it's a combination of understanding what other municipalities are doing. And I, I can't say anymore, this is not, it's not a, a, it's, it's a help, it's a, I, I mean, I would find it hard to believe that anyone could argue that, that what MRI has done with us so far hasn't been great assistance to this town. And I'd like to see it, whether it's MRI or RPG, I don't care, but to try, to do this on our own will not work.
Can I, and then Counselor Levy, I'll let you go. Would the council find it palatable if I were to go to Cliff and say, we agree with the concepts of what we should be working to consolidate? There has been, there are concerns on the council, by some members of the council, as to whether or not it should be driven, that it should be driven by an external individual, and that I'd like him to, or a request of him to get the same temperature from members of the school board, as to whether or not they want external or not, because we're only half of this equation, there's a whole nother board that's involved in this. So that before we start losing it here, let's see what, what their feeling is, because at the end of the day, there needs to be two boards voting for this, not just one. So, Counselor Levy.
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. So that is, that is the concrete step I'm taking from this. I'm going to go to chair of the school board and let him know the robust conversation and direct him to the minutes on the recording, and, and then allow him to ask the questions. He at least has the opportunity to ask questions. Who was that? I do not know.
Facilities management.
Yeah, there's a facilities management issue, it sounds like they're shooting at us, I don't think things are getting that bad. And at least he has the ability to build off of this conversation with, with his board. So. Next item, nominations to the Economic Development Committee. I will entertain nominations for the two council positions, Vice Chair Bentley.
I nominate Counselor Levy for a position on the Economic Development Committee.
Nomination, is there a nomination, a second?
Second.
Counselor Levy has a nomination, a second. There are two positions, do we want to just go through and?
I, just so I can understand the structure, are you on it already?
I'm not on it already, no.
Then I'm going to recommend, I'm going to nominate the chairman, Mizaro.
Second.
Nomination, a second. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll vote on Counselor Levy first. Ellen, the vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Next on myself, Counselor Mizaro.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passes six to zero. If the council doesn't have an issue with it, I'm going to contact NBA and NCDC, so, and ensure that they're, and the planning, well, I've already talked to the planning board chair, to ensure that they're nominating their individuals, and then we can work together to set up, set up a first meeting of that. Vice Chair Bentley.
Was there, I can't, I don't have that night, was there an at-large person at two? Or one or two?
We're at large, we'll have, we'll work with the administrator to ensure that there are, there were two at-large positions.
Okay. I just couldn't remember.
So, for people at home, for people at home, if you are willing to serve on the Economic Development Committee, there are two at-large positions, please contact your, well, Chief Seer is the current town administrator, but if you're willing to contact myself or Counselor Levy too, since we're the representatives from the council, we will ensure to pass that information to the full committee. Counselor Levy.
It's probably not, not exactly the right time, but I was just going to ask, are we going to do something similar possibly with this for the efficiency from the council as having representatives, or?
So we already voted on the representatives, like, about two months ago.
Just for the efficiency?
For the efficiency, yeah.
Okay, I just want to be clear. And they're going to just, and they're just going to meet similar to the way we're going to? Because I, maybe I missed that.
Yeah, the efficiency committee that Counselor Zink and Counselor LeBranch are on?
Yeah. That I understand, but I'm saying, and they're going to come back and specifically report, it's sort of the way we've been getting these, we'll be doing the same thing theoretically for economic development.
Yes, yes.
Is that, okay, I just wanted to know what the format.
Okay. Old, new business. We'll start with, last time we spoke about the Stratford Metropolitan Planning Organization, transportation planning for the region, to appoint Dan Hardy as the representative. There are actually two, and then chairman of the planning board was here. There's the SPRC, which is for a member of the community, and then there's the Stratford Regional Planning Commission Metropolitan Planning Organization, SPMO Technical Advisory Committee, so the SPMO-TAC, and that is generally the planners of towns or individuals that are working for the towns that are appointed to that. So, I'd be, but there still needs to be nominated by the, and appointed by the council for that individual to serve. So I would be willing to entertain a motion for a one-year appointment, I'm sorry, a two-year appointment.
Oh.
Anybody.
I just lost my screen. So we're?
So, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Is Diane Hardy?
Diane Hardy.
Okay, can I make a motion to accept or nominate Diane Hardy to, I guess the term would be, I didn't see that, is it 2014?
Yes.
So, to continue being on the Stratford, be with me. What's it officially, I want to get.
Regional planning.
Regional planning through fiscal year 2013 to 2014.
Second.
Motion, a second, is there a discussion? Seeing none, Ellen, could you please call the vote?
Counselor Levy?
Aye.
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 Counselor Carmichael.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you, Diane Hardy. Any other old, new business?
Just before we go to that, is that, is that, was there a vacancy for the other one, or am I missing?
There is a vacancy for the other one still. The individual who Chair of the Planning Board mentioned is actually a, not a citizen, so that individual cannot be nominated to it. So there still is a vacancy to that position.
Would you like it?
No, I just wanted to know if we had, if, if maybe we could get out.
Yes, if anyone else wants to, if anyone else out in the community would like to serve in the Stratford Regional Planning Commission, I would contact the chair of the planning board, Val Shelton. Counselor Zink.
Well, I kind of figured since Counselor Levy and I have shed blood tonight, we might as well continue. And my, my comment is based on the presentation that was given by, oh, I think it was the benefits people, in your comment earlier on in the, in the, in the meeting about, we're here to ask questions, not to make comments. I've heard from people that have presented, people that have presented and employees that have presented, you indicated to him tonight his numbers don't add up. And I think that's exactly what we're trying to avoid, is putting people in a situation where they come to present to us and we get to make editorial comments, be they true or not, and they're not in a position to be able to respond to it. So I just think we need to be very careful that, that people that present to us are asked questions and we don't comment about the form of their presentation or anything else, so, just for what it's worth.
Well, I'll let Counselor Carmichael though, then I have a statement.
My feeling is that these people, a lot of people are coming before us unprepared. They're coming, it happened again a couple instances tonight, and just, how many times we've been going back months since I've been here, and we keep saying, no, it's not going to happen, we're going to halve, and we told the town administrator, and, you know, you kept telling, no, when Ed was here, you told him, a few meetings in a row, you know, we need the right paperwork, and so. My, my whole thing is, when I see somebody up there like that, and whether it's a person just coming in to speak to us, if they don't have this, our department head especially, if you don't have your numbers, or, you know, just come in and say hi, introduce yourself, and leave the paperwork, let me look at it, and next time, make a real appointment, so. My feeling on it.
Counselor Levy. Just for clarification, because I don't want to make it personal.
Let me look at it. And next time, make a real appointment. So, my feeling on it.
Counsel Leavy.
Just for clarification, because I don't want to make it personal. The numbers that we were given last time, the format had like an option one, an option two, et cetera. I won't get into all the details. But I ran the numbers. And the deductibles and some of the dollar savings from the employees, I didn't go into it because the numbers changed tonight. And the numbers didn't... And I'd be happy to show you where they didn't add up. But I wasn't really trying to... You know, it was frustrating because we were just handed a set of numbers tonight and the deductible went from $1,000 to $750, but we're going to make up the other $250. And I took a lot of time to run those numbers. In fact, I called the chair with some of my concerns so you could theoretically vet that with them before they came in. Because I didn't want to go through a situation where I was asking them questions and everybody was trying to add up numbers. I was trying to get it so it was all done, you know, before the meeting. And then when they came... I didn't even expect them tonight. So, when they came in and then I was handed that information and it was a completely different format, you know, than what we had been given before. It was frustrating. And as far as, you know, selling this to the employees, and I don't want to make this a whole hoop-de-doo, but, you know, the $269 number, I did the single and the family, which was supposed to be a savings of like $760-something. The numbers didn't add up based on what we were given last time. And I was going to go into that, except the numbers changed tonight and I really didn't want to embarrass them or anything. I was just... It's frustrating when you're handed numbers. I mean, this is like the, you know, and I don't want to belabor it. It's like the fourth meeting in the last three that, you know, some department heads and some outside vendors who are presenting to us have walked up and given us information that we're supposed to try to extrapolate. And it's just personally, I think Ed's dead right. If that's the case, they should give us the information, thank us for, you know, take a look at it, come back. If you have any questions, go through it. But it's just... It's just a very difficult way to try to, you know...
Vice Chair Bentley.
Good business. Hats off, Chair, to you trying to, you know, at the beginning, trying to say what we need to do going forward. I think we all have talked about meetings being more productive. You had asked past Town Administrator, you know, certainly near the end of his tenure, about maybe changing when things are due. So, we all have time to look at it ahead of time. Maybe we get the stuff on Thursday instead of Friday or Monday. And, you know, I think we need to do that. I think we need to be informed and have time to ask questions ahead of time so we don't spend a lot of time here. I think, you know, Steve's going to come through those doors. We're all ready to go. And I think it's a great thing to start asking them. We need help. Meetings be more efficient, having all the info ahead of time. You know, we could just start asking preliminary questions ahead of time through the right channels. If there's someone coming on propane, you can ask, you know, the week ahead. Hey, I see they're coming. Hey, can you ask them, Steve, about this? Or can you ask them, you know? Because we shouldn't be circumventing the system. But we'd all be silly to think that, you know, we all aren't... Each one of us are part of some inefficiency at some point, some more than others. I'm verbose as hell. I'm being it right now. But I catch myself and apologize earlier when I spoke without pushing my button. And we have had going back and we have had some condescending behavior that I've been embarrassed to be proud of. And I've heard about it from strangers at the Bean or at Market Basket saying, "What was that all about?" So, that's why I said, whether it's an outsider or a citizen, a town employee, you know, we need to have some proper respect and, you know, make the point and make it quick and not 10 times. And if we need them to come back, then politely ask them to come back and not, you know, not humiliating or embarrassing or punish them for not having something. Or in some cases, not agreeing with them. Because we don't agree. We shouldn't, you know, there's certainly been people here I didn't agree with. And I know I haven't always kept it in, but I try to, you know, bite my tongue pretty hard. So, you know, I commend you for trying to make these more efficient. I think we all own a piece of it. Some of us, like myself, probably bigger than others. But every minute we spend doing something we should really be doing in here will get us where we need to be. And certainly the last three years, two and a half years, you know, they weren't efficient. We like to talk about businesses. And if I ran my business, like I run this meeting, we'd be out of business sometimes. Those nights were good nights and those nights were bad nights. And we need to have more good nights and less bad nights, so.
So, I'm going to make a comment before I go back. Counsel Zink. You're done? Yeah. So, I'm going to agree that when people come up without us having any pre-information or hand us something the night of, it is incredibly frustrating and impossible to draw any conclusions out of anything. It is... I'm frustrated too when it happens. It's... You look at it, it's like, well, how am I supposed to digest two pages of information right now as you're talking at me when there was all this time to get... Where we should have pre-reading going on where we're all allowed to process this stuff. So, completely agree that that is frustrating as hell. Pardon my language. It's frustrating as heck. Apologize for the cuss word. On the flip side, we need to do a better job. And I probably let it slide because I was agreeing with you on it. And that's my fault. I'm not supposed to let things slide because I agree with it. We shouldn't be telling them we're frustrated. We should be telling each other when there's an administrator here. Me, I'm... Look, there's no administrator here right now. So, I'm in my copious free time forced to work to try to get, pack it stuff together. And then this... Then something like this comes up and gets slipped in and we don't have the pre-reading. So, I agree that it's frustrating. We need to put an end to it. We need to do everything we can to put an end to it. And I agree the last three or four meetings, oddly enough, the one where it hasn't been an administrator has... Or a full-time administrator has been where we're having the most of these problems. But we just can't allow that to be taken out of them. We kept telling them we're frustrated with them. They're not the problem. The problem's our organization and our interaction with them. So, we need to maintain... I think we should save those comments for like here and here. These two seats are the ones that should get those comments. And, you know, I'm a big enough guy that I could take it. And you're right. Frustrating as hell, frustrating as heck. Pardon my language. Because it's frustrating.
A lot worse.
Yeah. But you understand what I'm saying. We shouldn't be telling them we're frustrated. We should tell these two people we're frustrated, myself.
You know, just to that point, you know, that's why I didn't want to go through these issues. You know, I brought them all up. You know, I called you that about a month ago. Because I really didn't... I didn't want... I don't want to embarrass anybody. It's not my goal. But in the same vein, if the numbers aren't making sense, they either have to make sense or you have to get back to me and say, "No, that's what it's supposed to be." Or "You misunderstood this or that." And when... I was going to bring it up tonight. I had all my notes. I was going to bring it up, but I didn't because the numbers all changed. So, that, you know, and should I have not said that? I don't know. It's just maybe... Maybe at the end of the day, we should have a policy that, you know, we're not going to be getting things... I think Ed's dead right. If you want to give us something, even the road stuff that we were given last time. I mean, and this is no disrespect to Rick. I mean, he got it that day. So, that's the way it is. So be it.
So, we push it off a meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying. He handed it to us. I don't know how you can make thoughtful... I would never make a decision like that, you know, in my business. And I don't think anybody here would really do that. But we're put in that position like, "So, what do we want to do with this?" So, I think we ended up compromising. I think Mike voted nay. I can't remember, but to do the $50,000. And, you know, that's what we ended up doing with the road stuff. But I didn't really have time to make sense of what we were given. Was anybody else able to really extrapolate all that information immediately? You know? So, I... That's my thought.
I would just summarize. I think this has been a good discussion. I think that what I've heard from presenters is many, including employees, have felt as though they are engaged in a debate about their presentation. And we can draw a conclusion as to whether we think their presentation is good or whether we think it's not good. And that discussion can occur after we... After the individual is there. But to say to a presenter, "You keep changing..." And I'm not speaking specifically, "But you keep changing the numbers every week," is inappropriate, in my opinion. That you can conclude if you want to, but to subject that person not being able to say, "Wait a minute. Timeout. I haven't changed the numbers. You misunderstood what I presented." That isn't what that is all about. I think it's a questioning period and it's not a period where you editorialize or debate with a presenter about his information. That's my point of view. And others may disagree.
Well, I think we just all need to be honest brokers of each other and hold each other accountable for it. And I need to make sure that when I'm stepping in, it's not anything personal. It's just that I think we're falling off task or we're moving off of that. So, thank you for that healthy conversation, counselors. A couple other pieces of new business. We actually need to have a resolution read and signed to make Chief Seer as the acting Town Administrator. So, I'm going to read this real quickly and we'll vote on it and then potentially sign it. Town of Newmarket Resolution 2012-13-05 to authorize Kevin Seer as acting Town Administrator to submit and sign for grants, whereas the Town of Newmarket has the opportunity to apply for a state and federal grant. And whereas Article 5, the Town... Newmarket Town Warrant was passed by a town meeting on May 12, 1998. And whereas Kevin Seer is the acting Town Administrator for the Town of Newmarket. And whereas Article 5, the Newmarket Town Warrant article does read as follows. Quote, "To see if the town shall accept the provisions of RSA 31:95-B, proving that any town at an annual meeting may adopt an article authorizing indefinitely until specific precision of such authority to Town Council to apply for, accept, and expend without further action by the town meeting and anticipated money from a private source for other governmental unit or a private source which becomes available during the fiscal year. Such money shall be used for legal purposes for which a town may appropriate money. The Town Council shall hold a prior public hearing on the action to be taken. Notice of the time, place, and subjects of such hearing shall be published in a newspaper or general circulation for these seven days before the hearing is held. Action to be taken under the section shall, A, not require the expenditure of any other town funds, except those funds lawfully appropriated for the same purpose, and B, be exempt from all provisions of RSA 32 relative to limitation and expenditure of town monies. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Town of Newmarket Council does hereby authorize Kevin Seer as acting Town Administrator to submit and sign for available grants in accordance with Article 5, the Newmarket Town Warrant, given the day... Given at the Town Council chambers, the first day of August, the year over, 2012." Basically, Article 5 of our charter requires that we have to have a resolution passed to allow him to sign for grants, should grants come through. Is there a motion? Oh, there are motions. Counsel Lebranche.
Motion to accept Resolution 2012-2013-05 as read.
Second. Motion a second. Discussion. Seeing none. Ellen, please vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Any other new business? Or old business? Counsel Lebranche first.
Okay. Going through some of the recent non-public sessions that we've had, I would like to make a motion to unseal the following non-public minutes. The approved non-public minutes of June 27, 2012, July 9, 2012, and after they are approved this evening, July 18, minutes number two.
Second.
Motion a second. Discussion. Counsel Leavy.
Could you just read those back? What were the three dates, please?
June 27, 2012, July 9, 2012, and July 18, 2012, the second session.
Are these comments on this for these different things? Different thing for me. I'm going to clear them, knowing that you guys have different things, just so that people have a chance to comment. I'm going to keep track of you. I just cleared your bottom, that's all. Discussion. Counsel Leavy.
Did those... I don't... I can't recollect those off the top of my head.
Those are the ones that were sitting.
Yeah. So, my question is, was that all having to do with the discussion regarding the new Town Administrator? And that had the...
Only three of the five. Because the first two, we...
These are the ones that do not... These do not mention in any way, shape, or form other candidates.
That's what I was trying to let you hear.
And that will reflect the changes made to the last one that...
Yes.
Correct.
There you go. Fine. Thank you.
It'll be the ones that were voted on, not the ones that were drafted.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counsel Lebranche.
Right. Well, I just want to make it clear that it's not the ones that we received this evening because they were not the actual approved ones.
Those were the draft ones. Their edits were made to the...
Okay.
Yes. But they're the same dates.
Yes. Yeah, just so... Oh, I'm sorry.
Counsel Leavy, go ahead.
So, I'm clear. So, is that the one that Ellen made the changes? The change that I had questioned last time? Was that in the one that we're releasing?
Yes, that is one of the ones we are reading.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Can I just make a little note?
Yeah, go ahead.
On July 18, I have written Town Council workshop number two. You mean the non-public session. I need to correct that.
Yes. Any other comments? I think it's a good idea that the public gets to see what happened in non-public now that we have the opportunity to let this information go. So, I think it's a really great motion. Thank you for that, Counsel Lebranche. Any other comment? Seeing none.
Seeing none, Ellen, could you please call the vote?
Aye.
LeBranche?
Aye.
Mr. Zink?
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Any other new business? Counts, oh, that's right, Counsel Bentley, then Counsel Carmichael. Just go for it. I know what you want to talk about.
Okay, just, we've been asked to bring up, talk about Old Home Weekend. There, looks like there will not be another meeting between now and then. So it's Saturday, August 11th, it's downtown from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. The streets will be closed at 10:00 a.m. Downtown streets, as always, they'll, we wrote traffic, yes, 10:00 a.m. And there's a lot of different flyers come out, you can go online and find it also, but fireworks at night, musical entertainment during the day, 90 different vendors, you know, food, the Oyster Fest, the Beer Tent. They have two fundraisers, one for Brendan Pratt Scholarship fundraiser happening, and one for Robert McGloffen, who, you know, two great losses to our town this year. And a shout out to Debbie Garrettson and all her hard work. She's pretty much the one-person show. I believe Adam's helping her on some big parts of it, I shouldn't forget Adam's name also, but Debbie's doing a lot of work on this. So anyway, it's a great, great time of the year, come out, come out and see it and support it, and certainly support these two fundraisers for, to Newmarket's own. Again, August 11th, 10 a, 11:00 a.m. till 10:00 p.m., with the roads closing at 10:00 a.m. The race that day, the fireworks that night, and a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bentley. Counsel Carmichael.
Yes. I received something, a letter in the mail from the office here, and it was about the town dump in our, with the contract with Newfield. Did you get to see that? And can I discuss that?
Yeah, you can discuss it. Old, new business.
Okay. There was a contract signed. We had discussed this a lot a month ago. We said, geez, what, what's the story with the town dump? You know, what kind of setup do we have with Newfields? And it looks like we just, on April 4th, our former administrator signed a contract with Newfields to take effect in 20, from 20, January of next year, 2013, for five years. And it was three, I think it was 3,000 every six months. And so it's a total of 6,000. I just wonder if he had the authority to do that.
I believe he does, but we can look into that. But certainly, I think that falls.
He signed this long-term contract, and it just seemed to me like a long time, five years from this coming January. Why would you do it now? Back in April?
All right, thank you, Ed. I have just one other piece of, I guess, new business, but no one loves letters to the editor like I do, but there's a couple I just want to make sure that I'm answering. It's an opportunity to answer in a public forum. One of the letters questioned whether or not a former counselor, Roseanne Quox, had received a plaque, and that's been checked on, and she indeed did receive a plaque. So she did receive that for service to the town. And another question around driving a town vehicle, several people asked a question about driving a town vehicle. That's within the personnel policy as it currently stands, and it's administrator decision because it's written in the personnel policy, a person driving a town vehicle home, using it as back and forth, that certain people who are on call have the authorization to do that. We are going to be reviewing the personnel policy as the new town administrator comes on, and we will have an opportunity to voice change in the policy at that point, just so everyone understands at home. Any other new business? Seeing none, we have two sets of non-public minutes to approve, July 18, 2012, number one, and July 18, 2012, number two. I will entertain a motion.
What were they again?
July 18.
It's the one that was in the white envelope.
It was in the white envelope we got earlier this week, or last week. The envelope looks like this.
You got two?
Yeah. Counsel LeBranche, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the non-public minutes of July 18, 2012, number one.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?